Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Nice to see a full house today. Welcome to our third work session on the fiscal 2023 through 32 CIP. We've got quite a few presentations today, including public safety capital, the Department of Technology Services, utilities, stormwater, and debt. We will pause between each presentation for board discussions and questions. We are also joined today by our Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission, whose work we greatly appreciate, and I believe we will hear from them after the final presentation before the board discussion on that final item. So, as a reminder to anybody who may be following along at home, today's presentations, as well as a variety of ways to interact with the CIP, including new this year, that interactive map, are available online. Just search Capital Improvement Plan at arlingtonva.us. And without further ado, Mr. Manager, I turn it over to you to get us started.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to ask Jeff Bergen to lead us through the conversation on public safety, technology, and capital items. Over to you, Mr. Bergen.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you, members of the county board. My name is Jeff Bergen. I'm the financial officer for the Department of Public Safety Communications and Emergency Management. It's my honor today to represent the four public safety agencies here to talk about public safety capital. I've got some folks in the crowd, as well as probably online, so if I can't answer any of your questions, hopefully they can as well. And looking for the slides. You can wing it. Well, while those are coming up, again, I'm very excited to be here today. We're going to be talking about our public safety capital program. And I think before we even get started on that, before we talk about what these projects are, we want to talk a little bit about what the group is that is doing this work. So it's a combination of not just the public safety agencies, but public safety information technology. Public safety information technology, or PSIT, was founded in 2015, and it was from staff that was reallocated from other agencies doing IT-related work. And they came together to sit in the police department, represent all of the agencies, and really provide their expertise in public safety consulting, focusing on applications, infrastructure, and project management. And what's really unique about them is they're the, here we go, it is probably the only group in the region that does this, where we have a public safety information technology group that works with a governance board structure. So we have a structure, as you can see here, with a deputy county manager working with the chiefs in all of public safety, as well as the CIO of the county. And they lay out the vision for technology for public safety, looking at strategic long-term investments, focusing on regional collaboration where possible, as well as where we can leverage in some joint purchasing through COG for our systems. And they'll come together and they'll do something that's amazing, is they'll prioritize the projects, even if they're not their own. So they are working as a group to really develop that portfolio for all public safety, fight for those projects, and do it as a group, and really task that out to public safety IT. That program, which is led by Mary Paxton, does a fantastic job of taking that lead from the governance board, and really trying to find some answers and solutions to those. So as we walk through those projects today, it's really the hard, a result of the hard work of both PSIT and the governance board to lay out that strategy, guide that information forward, and develop the project portfolio that we're going to talk about today. All right, next slide. When we were talking about our projects, I think that teamwork really got us to a point of saying it's not just about information technology. Well, it's really about public safety capital as a whole. And we really looked at six critical business areas that we felt were the bedrock of public safety capital. There are public safety communications. This is focused on radios, the call processing equipment, which we worked with the City of Alexandria on, as well as response equipment for the firefighters. This could be breathing apparatus, defibrillators, public safety vehicles, our rescue trucks and our ladder trucks and our pumpers, facility improvements at our fire stations to make sure that we keep our facilities safe, as well as our personnel, detention center security to make sure we keep contraband out and keep people safe, and last but not least, our public safety IT applications and hardware. So these areas being kind of the foundational piece of public safety, when those agencies come up here to talk to you about their budget, and they talk about their performance metrics, their response times, their call volumes, their clearance rates, those are made possible not just for the great work that the staff do, but also the investment in those systems that we're going to be talking about today. And when we talk about the program, our goal is to highlight that these are to provide personnel with the tools that they need, and to make sure that the systems are refreshed within a timely manner. All right, next slide. We talked about the six critical business areas, but we also wanted to share with you all today what some of those successes have been that we've done over the last few years. So we have, in the area of detention center security, we have replaced our x-ray machines, upgraded those to keep contraband out. Our public safety communication systems, we replaced our analog system with a voiceover IP. That was the work that we did with the City of Alexandria for our new nine-on-one phone system. Our fire personnel have received new breathing apparatus to help keep them safe in their response. We've gotten new public safety vehicles. We've upgraded our fire station alerting, and we've deployed mobile data terminals to our police vehicles to ensure our officers have the equipment that they need. Next slide. So focusing a little bit on what we've achieved, we want to now look at what we have going forward. So over the next 10 years, we're looking at a public safety capital portfolio of around $80 million in these six business areas. And as you can see on the slide in front of you, that some are larger than others, as far as the financial investment. Some projects are more complex, some are smaller projects, but they take that work that we talked about with the governance board and public safety IT to really work through, get those refreshment cycles, and focus on what's important. Okay. We're going to walk through kind of some of those program areas, highlight some of the projects that we are focusing on in over this 10-year CIP. That's the next slide. We're going to be talking about the detention center security. These are mostly projects related to the sheriff's department. Most of these have about a 10-year useful life. As you can see on the replacement years, we have some coming up soon as far as the Justice Center security system and replacing the x-ray machines. These will be focusing again on the idea of keeping that center safe and secure and keeping contraband out. Okay, our next program area is on facility improvements. This is for our fire stations. So we recently have done the fire station alerting, upgrading all of that within our fire stations. And our new project that we have this cycle is the plymo vent system refresh. That's to update the exhaust bays that are in each of the fire stations to make sure that we have, we're ventilating from the equipment that comes in. So that's a two-phase project. I believe it's five fire stations in FY23, and then another three in FY28. Next slide. This is one of our larger areas of investment, and this is on public safety communications. So this is one where we have worked, as I mentioned before, with the City of Alexandria. That was one of our first regional programs that we had done, where we came up together, identified what our needs were, realized that we had some common infrastructure and system needs, and developed an MOU to identify and fix both, all those areas. We did that in, I believe, FY19. So our next refresh on this is coming up about FY26 for some of the systems. It's got about a seven-year useful life. One of the larger projects that we have on here is our public safety radios for both fire, as well as police, sheriff, and dips them. We're replacing over 1,900 radios between all those agencies. So that's one of the reasons why we have it split into two projects, so we can stagger those out. That's a lot of radios to replace. We want to make sure that we are evaluating those and not replacing the whole fleet at one time. So that's why we have that staggered apart. And those also have about a seven-year useful life. And the last is the public safety radio system itself. That's the backbone of the system, which we'll be looking to upgrade in FY23. And for all of those projects, we have the maintenance of those within our operating budgets that we had discussed earlier. Okay, next slide. This one is our IT applications and hardware. It's a unique mix of small and large projects. We noticed on here that we have about nine different projects with over 16 different refreshment cycles. So unlike some of the other ones we've talked about, where we have, we can identify the assets, and we know how many we have, a lot of these are just some of the backroom things, servers and things like that. We do know we have over 400 mobile data terminals, but a lot of the things that you'll see on here are, like I mentioned, the records management system, our servers that we're replacing. They're critical for the day-to-day operations, and it's a unique blend of managing some of those small and large projects. And a great credit to our public safety IT team that manages all of these. Next slide. This one is on our response equipment. So this is for the firefighters. We are replacing our breathing apparatus. We did this just in FY20. We're replacing over 400 different systems that we have. It's about a 10-year useful life, so we're not looking at this until about FY30. This is our estimate for what we'll need then, but again, 400 systems that are deployed to the field. And then our defibrillators have about a seven-year useful life, last replaced in FY17, and we're looking at FY24 and FY31 in our refreshment cycle to replace about 70 of those units. And then thermal imaging cameras, that's a new project for us this cycle, again, just providing our fire personnel with the equipment that they need in the field. Next slide. And this is a project of one. So this is our public safety vehicles, which is the replacement of our fire vehicle apparatus. We're replacing over 13 pumpers, three heavy rescue units, an aerial ladder truck, and an aerial platform truck. And I'm going to actually ask Chief Pavlitz to speak to this if possible. These are their vehicles. But it's a great program. It's got an eight-year buyback program, and it provides our fire personnel with the equipment that they need. Yep?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Give a quick briefing on our public safety vehicle program. When we order the apparatus from the dealer, we lock in a trade-in value at eight years. A lot of benefits for this program. It keeps our fleet in a very high readiness state. It's kind of the envy of the National Capitol Region also, but it also gives us value on turning that apparatus back in. We're locking in approximately one-third of the value in eight years, which, but if it does, if it's resold at a higher value, we split the difference between the resellers. So even if the numbers come up, but it's also a floor. It'll never go below that, so we do lock in that trade-in value. So for this fiscal year, or maybe last fiscal year, where we have four engines and one heavy rescue, the buyback that we've received is basically the value of one fire engine, which is about $800,000. And we're seeing the price escalate year after year after year. So this has been a very beneficial program, and it also keeps our fleet in good readiness state, but we also have operational savings in that year nine, year 10 of the heavy fleet, we start incurring lots of maintenance costs. So it is kind of a sweet spot we've seen over the years.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think that speaks to another point for all of our projects, which is we're really trying to time the refreshment of these so that we're doing it within our industry standard windows, so that when we're maintaining these systems, they don't get too expensive in the out years. So our public safety IT team really, really looks at what is that key timeframe where we can refresh those systems before they become broken down or too expensive. So on our next slide, we kind of lay out our program summary, and I think that speaks to what their main goal is, is try to spread out those projects in a way so that we don't have heavy spikes in one year, where we have too many projects going on, where it makes it more difficult to implement and more difficult to maintain. So when we look at kind of prioritizing our project portfolio, it's to really smooth out those projects, so there's not huge spikes, not only financially, but also harder work on the staff to maintain those schedules. We've worked with DMF for the whole time about this, to really, really identify the project start dates and end dates, and try to propose something that really meets everybody's needs. And I think that's kind of shown in the 10-year projected costs. And then the next slide is really just showing too how we're able to leverage the different sources of funding. So again, working as a team, working with the governance board, and really identifying what those project priorities are, the implementation cycle and the refreshment cycle, we're able to leverage Pago funding, as well as short-term finance. So I leave this one to the financial wizards to figure out, but I think it's a credit to the whole team involved, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. If you wouldn't mind staying close, as well as some of our subject matter experts within the departments, we'll have a little bit of board conversation. Just to get us started, you were mentioning industry standard windows for replacement, and so I was going to ask about sort of how we determine those 10-year cycles. So if you wanted to see a little more about that, and then the other question I had is, given those standards, you know, our ongoing relationship with the trade-in program, is there enough predictability in this market for public safety equipment that it has not been as subject to the sort of procurement shocks of supply chain issues and inflation? Or are we experiencing that the same way we are with other elements of our capital program?
So on the first one, as far as the timeframe and the refreshment cycle, that's something that our public safety IT team works really well. So they will consistently ask staff to lay out what is the, you know, what are the key parts of the project, what are the key systems that we're looking to do. They're constantly doing research on those, as well as the subject matter experts in the department, to identify kind of what is the leading standard, what is the refresh cycle, also looking at our warranties and the contracts that we have there, and working with the region. As far as the procurement shock, I don't know. We can get back to that. I haven't experienced it as much yet, but I know that there has been some elements as far as these type of large projects where we're planning out a longer term. I don't think we've seen it as much, but maybe in some of the smaller procurements.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, it's very. Are we going to do, we'll do a few rounds, I'm gathering.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just following up on that a little bit, I found myself wondering, too, do fire apparatus change like cars do? So if you buy a car after eight years, which I usually weigh eight to 10 or whatever, it's like, oh, whoa, look what they're doing now. Is the same, happening at the same speed with fire apparatus? I'm just kind of curious.
I'll have to turn that one back over to the chief for the specifics on the fire apparatus.
Yeah. Because it might have implications for training and everything, right? I'm assuming, I don't know.
The answer is yes. There'll be new technologies and new approaches that'll be integrated with, within fire rescue apparatus, and that will probably drive the cost up. One of the bigger variables I think we're going to see over the next decade is, and we're trying to reconcile this, is electrification of our heavy fleet. So when that happens through the buyback program, we're at least locking in a value. At some point in time, the value of the diesel fleet may start to cascade down as more and more move to electrification. So at least we're locking in a bottom line value for our trade-ins that we're going to be, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine years out. So we're monitoring, but I don't see any drastic change in terms of form or factor. It's just technologies that may be integrated, and it probably makes the fleet more efficient in time.
Good, just not a big deal. Thank you, thank you much.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Dursley and Mr. Karen Tornas.
Thank you. That buyback program, it's a great deal. But in terms of the radio station sites program, are we also pursuing upgrades that are going to enhance the security for that critical infrastructure, to protect it from sabotage, whether it's physical or cyber?
Yes, I know when we're looking at our radio system in the past, we were just looking at hardware, but obviously that's changed since the last 10-year cycle. So so much of what we're looking at now is our, is our software, is the encryption, and in that, that safety or the security of that system. Those systems are also maintained under contract, and we make sure that on those contracts, our annual operating contracts, to have that element in there as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Karen Tornas.
Yeah, on the replacement of, you know, the ongoing replacement of the trucks. So, yeah, okay, electrification is one of the things. So how, I mean, this is, this seems to be a very good deal, right, to have a guaranteed buyback at 30% of the value. Does this also lock us in, or is there, how do you, would you evaluate, is there a competitive market for procurement there? Is it a perk that we, you know, take, but we accept to limit our options? The reason why I'm asking that is, we hear very often that, you know, the size of the trucks, especially when we deal with, you know, with road diet, with improvements in our complete streets, et cetera. It has happened time and again, that the size of the trucks has limited a little bit our options there, because they need a certain width of a street. So I can imagine that different, I don't know that, I'm just asking whether there is a market for some, you know, different specs, so that we eventually could have a fleet that's more, you know, compatible with the desires of a future with, you know, a little bit narrower streets. So is, do these things, you know, are they at all relevant in the conversation that we're having, or is it a spec that we can later tweak?
We certainly have flexibility, and our vendors and our manufacturers do build to specification within reason. The form, the general traditional form of fire apparatus in America has been pretty, I'm going to say, traditional and stable. But there's a lot of advances coming in from Europe, and a couple of these vehicles are being tested in other metropolitan areas, and we're watching pretty closely. So it's not a lock-in, but there's a lot of consistency in the current, I'm going to say, size and shape. We balance that out with, they're getting larger and larger, because we're carrying more and more equipment to handle a variety of emerging, regular and emerging threats. So we're trying to balance that with also the community, and there's a lot that goes into it. Our design and specification of fire apparatus is very intentional, and the conversation of how it fits within the community and also future needs is definitely forefront. Were you asked, was your question about the market on the resale?
Yeah, whether with a deal that we have, we, you know, exclude ourselves from a potentially competitive market. I'm not saying that's not a good deal. It seems to be a fantastic deal. I would subscribe under it, but I'm just asking that.
I think we're getting a better value from putting it in other auction services, and we are definitely locking in that value, and there seems to be a need. Over the last several years, Arlington County Fire Apparatus is pretty well-known, is very well-maintained, we have excellent airport service and shops, and it goes quickly. When it goes out on the market, and it probably goes to other departments in the domestic United States that are more or less in need, it goes fast. It's spoken for, and it doesn't sit on the, in the long.
Good to know that our fire trucks are such a hot commodity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. DiFretti.
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, regarding the interview rooms, the interview room technology, do you know, or maybe we, this may be for follow-up, does this, do you know if the technology is there to then share that information securely with the, with the police auditor, the new independent police auditor, or is that, that's something I could follow up on, if you like?
We can follow up on that. I don't know the answer to that question.
The interview rooms that the police have share, the data is uploaded to the, it's the Axon system. Yeah, do you want?
The interview room- Good afternoon. The interview rooms and the upgrades do make them compatible with the Axon body camera system and the backend video management system. All then is one seamless integration. So it does allow the interview rooms, the body camera footage, and other digital evidence to be shared seamlessly across the criminal justice enterprise. So that's to the common law's attorney, in the courtrooms, which you'll hear about in the DTS projects, to outfit those with the technology, and then of course, to the independent police auditor.
Great, thank you.
And the public.
Yes, I only have one other, but I don't want to go out of order.
Okay, great. All right, we'll do a second round. Thank you. I was really pleased to hear again and reminded of our cooperation with Alexandria on the radios. I know when we worked on that, I've always been really, really supportive of this cooperation. It saves money. I mean, there's all kinds of really good things about it. I remember it took years, I think. And we're doing it in two phases, and I think the thought was at the time, to expand it and do other things, because there obviously a lot of other radios were buying and things, and I, it would be, yeah, I thought we might have Mr. Miller or Dr. Miller, excuse me, back again. But anyway, any, any progress on continuing the cooperation, or is there some reason that's not a good idea?
If I could just remind you, we actually held, Arlington County Board and the Alexandria City Council held a joint meeting, I think in 2015, where we announced the beginning of this.
Yes.
Seven years later, we have success. So I'll let Dr. Miller give you the next chapter.
Thank you, and I'm looking for more success.
Sure.
I was at 60.
We are. We've actually just recently completed a study of the two radio systems, identifying the areas where we can have a greater level of interconnectivity and reliability. And right now, we're focusing on some shared site location development, where we'll be able to have some overlap across our communities. And the system works in a simulcast network. So long story short, the information is transmitted across the sites right now by fiber links, especially. And so what we're looking at is how we can share backhaul, whether that's fiber or microwave connectivity through those sites, to create more reliability within the system. So right now, we're sort of focused on the infrastructure, and how shared infrastructure can contribute to more robust systems. And then I think the next step from that, which is logical, is how shared systems can enhance coverage and response for our public safety officials within our communities.
Thank you, yeah. I'm purchasing some of those radios together, so that we could get a better price, maybe. It looks like you were going to add something. I had another question, but in fact, maybe I'll just make a quick statement, if I might, just real quick, before Mr. Dr. Miller leaves.
I'm the same issue.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to mention the CAD project as well. Our computer-aided dispatch system project that's underway is also a joint project with the city of Alexandria.
That's great. I think the more we can cooperate, the better. And sometimes with these cooperations, it's helpful to have some cooperation at the top. So if you ever would find it helpful for some of us to talk to our friends on the Alexandria City Council, or maybe in Fairfax or Falls Street City, I'm sure we'd all be very willing to do that, because I just think the better, more we cooperate, I think we, you know, we better serve the region, and we save money too. Thanks. Really appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. DiFranti?
This isn't so much a question as sort of a, I just want to sort of share this comment and thought. As between people and technology for public safety, I lean people, but I also like fancy gadgets, and that's human. And so, yes, unfortunately, it is historically. I was trying to sort of make light of it a little bit, but is there, in your integrated system, you know, a way to get those cost efficiencies? Because, you know, I don't think we should decrease investment in our detention facility, but we have 200 fewer inmates, on average, than we did. And that's hard for me to be spending, I'd love to pay, you know, that's a lot of resources. So I don't know if you can, you don't have to offer philosophy, but if there's a way to reassure us, because I'm not easily, even going to page D42, I'm not going to be able to easily look under the, and so I don't know if you have thoughts about cost containment or cost limitations, not because I want less than excellent quality technology for us, but I'd love to pay officers and deputies and firefighters and our staff as a whole more. So I don't know if you have any thoughts there.
I think as far as a cost containment standpoint, you know, if it's, if it's a unit thing and assets in the field, obviously, we're able to drive that cost down and drive the number down. So if we're looking at radios or MDTs, I think sometimes with some of our systems, some of the things that you see on the detention center side, we're talking about cameras.
Fixed costs.
Yes, it's more fixed costs. I think the goals of the program have always been, and we've talked a lot about it, the regional collaboration, joint purchasing, trying to leverage as much as we can to get those costs down, not always be on the bleeding edge of technology too. So making sure that what we're doing has been vetted, and it's what we need, and not just what is always available, you know. So I think those are ways that the group as a whole, with that governance board structure, really make sure that we get it, cost containment as a principle.
Yeah.
It may not come through as clearly on there, but I think it is baked into the philosophy.
If I could add two things, that came up most recently, this trade-off, it's not really a trade-off between people and technology when it comes to law enforcement. First off, number one, whichever way you go, you're, I'm going to say you're not going to save money.
Okay.
But remember, the police practices group talked a little bit about when it came to, on police enforcement of traffic issues, having more cameras and more technology in the field as a way, is welcomed by the police department as a way to be able to have more effective and, you know, equitable enforcement without as many officers. Also, the same is true to a certain extent, and we have some opportunity, since we're refreshing the court's police building, and also the extent we make investments in the jail. The jail was built 20-plus, 25 years ago, and some of the things, I think, if we ever get to that point, we're not there now, where there can be design changes made, so that you might actually need less in the way of staffing, in order to provide a more secure kind of location. So it goes, you know, I just gave you two examples, maybe where you need fewer people, but what that means is that you can have, in some ways, a lower stress environment for the staff, and that's a good recruiting kind of tool, and often seen as a better working environment.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that, actually. I propose some, I've been having some conversations with a number of community members about, you know, the sense that Arlington is stretched, everything's stretched, and we're not, you know, growing services fast enough. And first, actually, I think the entirety of this presentation to the contrary, right, there is a plan, but also this note that actually a service delivery changes. It's not just about, you know, kind of adding a multiplier to the status quo, that actually we will see an evolution of service delivery that can result sometimes in better services with fewer people. So, or the same number of people as we grow, and create better quality of life for employees, which really matters. So on that note, I think, thank you so much. We really appreciate the presentation and the coordination across these agencies.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Next up, we're going to have, I'm going to ask Dr. Belcher to come up with his staff, and we're going to go through the Department of Technology Services, and Jack is wearing a special bow tie today, so I just might make.
All right.
Do you need some help with the technology?
You just push the button.
Picture wise.
Thank you so much for inviting me here today. I'm Jack Belcher, CIO in Arlington. And I've said many times in the past, we could not do what we do today if it was not for you, the leadership you've provided over the years. And it's not only yours, this team, but the team that I first met back in 2001, which is fantastic. What's true is, we're facing now a 10-year budget estimate in terms of our CIP, and the futures are unimaginable. But the one constant is that technology is going to help define that, and what does that mean, and how do we play that? What you're so fortunate to have here in the county is one of the best technology workforces you can find in local government today. So my hat's off to them, and many of them in the room today. So with that, I want to introduce Gilbert, Gilbert Pizano, our budget officer, and a DLC to talk about the CIP that's coming up. One thing we're at right now is an inflection point. We did a survey a couple days ago of our local governments across the country, and over 60% of them say the biggest challenge they have now is that the technology is shifting under them. We're at an inflection point. When I was upstairs just now, I picked up a piece of paper I had in my pocket, and it was the cell phone list from September of 2000, M1.
You need to buy new clothes.
At the time, we had a dozen cell phones in the county. If you want to see the names on this, you get a kick out of it.
This belongs in the Center for Local History over in Livers.
Yes. Give that to Diane Fresh for you.
And I remember giving them to them, and I had to train them on the use of the cell phone, and the purpose of it. Today, we have over 2,900 cell phones that you'll hear about. They say technology's increasing at a rapid pace. The one thing that's come out of the COVID, we're seeing 10 years of technology development take place in 18 months. It's coming that fast. And so what you're going to see, when we talk about our estimate, is it is reflecting that, rationalizing our investments in terms of technology, and what they mean in the next 10 years. A couple themes you're going to see go through is, we based everything on building, building things. We're going to move to an environment we're going to buy, and not build. We invested a lot in owning, and we're realizing that we're probably going to have to lease and license and use as necessary. We built ourselves on the fact we were going to manage, wholly manage all our enterprise in terms of technology, and the recognition now is, the best we can do is partner and co-manage. And so you'll see that in this budget presentation that's presented here today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Adil.
Is this on?
Yeah.
It's on now? It is. Perfect. So a common theme you'll notice repeated throughout this presentation is our cloud migration strategy, in conjunction with our three pillars, resiliency, innovation, and equity. It's embedded in almost all of our proposed programs or projects. But before we get into our projects, if we can go to the next slide, we'd like to address something that's very near and dear to DTS's heart, and that's how we're advancing equity, specifically racial equity and digital equity. And it isn't an exaggeration to say that the first bullet on this slide is very important to us, and that's evaluate every CIP project request with an equity lens. And it's not just asking those 2019 board-adopted questions of who's missing, who's burdened, who benefits, but going beyond that and asking ourselves, what steps can we take now as part of implementation or for future planning to help ensure that initiatives reduce disparities? And none of this is to say that this is the only factor that drives our technology investment, or that this factor wildly outweighs any other benefits, but it is to say that equity matters to us, is a part of our CIP conversation. Another bullet we'd like to highlight is the broadband study, and how that will shape our digital equity investment for this decade, and we'll have more to share in the summer of 2023, when we receive the results of that study. Before we get into our future outlook, Mr. Pizano is going to briefly talk about some of our accomplishments and where we stand today, so hand it over to him.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. So in FY22, we had a good number of accomplishments. We actually launched the public-facing website. So that's the new county website. It launched in the fall of 2022, and every day, we're adding new content, and it's being updated and refreshed. We also updated the AV and conference rooms, so that was a big project to update multiple sites. That included Fire Station 10, Long Bridge Acoustic Center, the Temporary Fire Station 8, Lubbock Run Community Center. And also a part of that, we also, the team worked to repair dozens of traffic signal terminals, and also brought Connect Arlington to those sites that I just mentioned. And then lastly, the telephone system study was completed in FY22, and with that, we've learned that the workforce is becoming more and more mobile. So Adil will talk a little more about that, because that's part of our CIP requests, so he'll get a little more into those details. Really quickly, I just wanted to point out that our 10-year CIP request is 107 million. That is to cover all of our CIP requests over the 10-year cycle. And then also, I just wanted to share that majority of that comes from short-term financing, and that is just the nature of the type of equipment and assets that we have. They tend to have about a six-to-seven-year lifecycle, and that is the financing that we are able to secure for that type of asset. Really quickly, the summary of, by program, wanted to point out that some of the largest programs are the lifecycle refresh, that makes up 24% of our requests. That's to update and modernize any applications that are part of that recycle, or I'm sorry, refresh. And then also workforce device modernization, that is what used to be known as our PC replacement program, but that is the devices that are issued and deployed to our workforce. And so that's refreshed on a continuous cycle, and that makes up 22% of our requests. And then the next larger group, I actually want to just point out, network and compute. Those two are the next largest groups. That is just equipment refreshment that supports our infrastructure and our network, so it continues to support the operation. And then really quickly, just a summary of our assets. So obviously, the network tends to have about a lifecycle of about six years. So here you can see a quick summary of that. Also, another important thing to point out is that PCs and laptops are also, with PCs or desktops being a four-year lifecycle, and laptops being a three-year lifecycle. So there's a refresh on those, on those intervals. And then two county-wide or enterprise software applications that are due for refreshment is the revenue and collection system, which is going to be refreshed in the 24, 25 fiscal year cycle. And then also, we have the enterprise financing HR system, which supports those functions, and that is scheduled to be refreshed in FY23 and '24 cycle.
All right, so in our opening remarks, we briefly talked about a common theme to this presentation, and that's our cloud migration strategy. We want to take a moment to explain why that is and why we're doing this. You'll notice our objective on this slide is to be cloud smart, and what that means is being practical, realistic in our decision-making process, answering questions like, what applications can we move to the cloud? Do we have the resources and expertise necessary to make this transition? How is this going to impact our network and security? And once we've thoughtfully answered those types of questions, some of the high-level key results we're looking to achieve are resiliency and sustainability, that's one. If a move like this is pursued, we would be able to scale to support larger workloads and more users much more easily than having on-premise infrastructure. Not only would we reduce our carbon footprint within Arlington County, but our cloud providers would take over the maintenance, upgrades, and security, so that we spend less on operations, both time-wise and monetarily. We'd be able to focus more of our time and shift our resources towards improving performance and user experience, as well as creating a culture of digital innovation and transformation. And speaking of transformation, if we can go to the next slide, our transformation to the cloud is dependent on how strong our network is. Now, before we dive into this slide, we do want to take a minute to explain this table, because you're going to see it more than once. And what we've done here is, we've listed all of our projects, or in some cases cyclical programs, which are items that happen every year that fall under what we've classified to be the network bucket. For each one of these projects, there's a strategic goal, as well as a series of specific tasks. We also want to give you a sense of when these initiatives are going to take place, and so we've included a timeline column as well. Now, what we don't want to do is bore you with the details of every single project listed on here. So broadly speaking, part of the goal here is, this new equipment not only refreshes the very critical equipment that maintain our WANDs and our network core, as well as our perimeter, but we're also improving security to provide the technology capability and capacity that we're looking for, because we're upgrading the county to a 10-gigabyte network. And what that means for our community is creating a reliably fast backbone, where you can bring more folks online, more devices online, in a safe and secure environment. A key takeaway from this slide is our focus on enhancing our capacity, our connectivity, and our security. Similarly, on the next slide, all of our projects under compute have an enhancement aspect to it, whether we're talking about enhancing items towards the cloud and reducing our data centers. Those first three items you see on here, data center, server hardware, and storage hardware, are key components to our compute power. For the past couple of years, there have been several drivers that have led us to say, hey, we need to revisit our comprehensive plan for this program. And just to name a few of those drivers, the exponential growth in data, big data, being able to process that data, housing that data. Board members, we can tell you in terms of storage, the county has been growing on average at a rate of 17% a year. And with that growth, there's been expanding demand for compute power to help support the backend. Another item you'll notice on here, and this directly ties to our cloud migration strategy, is the need for contractors, the right expertise in the space of cloud data, the need for cloud architects, as well as folks that have a greater understanding of cloud cloud architects, as well as folks that have a greater understanding of cloud security. Moving on to our next program, workforce device modernization. This is DTS's cyclical program of replacing PCs that have reached their useful end of life, and the industry benchmark is, which is something we follow, four years for desktops and three years for laptops. We continue to push forward with our goal of trying to achieve a 70-30 split when it comes to those types of devices. And what that means is 70% of the enterprise workforce has a mobile device, like a laptop or a tablet, as their primary device, and that goal gets easier and easier to achieve every year because these devices are getting much more powerful and durable with more capacity and capabilities each year. And so the benefits really to our constituents really is that because we're pushing ourselves to a mobile-friendly environment, we're able to facilitate services anywhere at any time, which is a good segue into our next slide, unified communications. So the first item on here is our cyclical program of repairing or replacing technology and equipment in conference rooms that we've recently upgraded to facilitate hybrid meeting environments throughout the county. We're not adding anything new with this request, but we'd be able to maintain what we have for the next 10 years. The two courtroom upgrades, however, are a major upgrade. The new upgrade will allow for the display of digital evidence in those two county courtrooms, replicating what's already available or underway in all the other courtrooms. The last item we'd like to highlight on this slide is the telephone system refresh program. Now, this isn't just a replacement of legacy equipment, but an investment to modernize our call center system to cloud-based solutions that don't require having a traditional desk phone at your workstation. These new services allow for seamless communication access to all your devices, which ends up providing better analytics, better feedback, more mobility, which in turn allows us to support the hybrid workforce we have and to improve customer service. So going back to the point we were making earlier, being able to facilitate services anywhere at any time. We also want to point out this investment aligns with the county's cloud strategy of being cloud smart. Speaking of being cloud smart, if we can go to the next slide, Connect Arlington. I hope you like these transitions. Connect Arlington, which is constantly in a state of remediation for breakage due to traffic accidents, contractor error, modification of a roadway, or just forces of nature, there's a need to keep on hand the equipment necessary for those types of emergencies. The second item on here, identified projects and critical upgrades to our fiber program. This is an area where, think back to the most turbulent times of the COVID-19 pandemic. During all that craziness, and even now, you'll probably remember that being connected matters. Whether you're a school child that needs to be online to get access to learning, whether you're working remotely, whether you're somebody who could not go to a hospital, but it was important for you to see your doctor via telehealth, having a connection mattered. And so the projects we've identified, as well as the critical upgrades we're proposing, is to make sure we can bring more folks online, address the needs of our schools by undergrounding the fiber going to our schools, making it more resilient, less susceptible to damages that would ultimately lead to outages, and to finalize those critical connections for missing links of what we would describe to be a fiber ring topology primarily in the national landing area. That's what we seek to accomplish with this program. If we can go to the next slide. So our lifecycle refresh program deals with critical applications that are long overdue for modernization. Now, a quick refresher here, the board has already approved much of this funding, with the exception of the out years as part of our Pago request, so I won't repeat what's already been said in the past, but broadly speaking, when it comes to all five of these systems, we have to keep these applications, one, trustworthy, two, stable and available, but also future-proof them to make sure we're not living with outdated systems. And so again, that's another reason why we're transitioning a majority of these applications to the cloud, where it's much easier to modernize them. And to continue with that thought onto the next slide. We've identified 24 applications in our eGov application suite. These are applications that at face value may not seem like they have the same weighted impact as the applications on the previous slide because of their niche focus. And to give you an idea of some of the applications we're talking about, Property Search, where you can look up the details of properties, like their tax assessment. Adopt a Street, where volunteers in Arlington County can take up the responsibility of keeping a street clean or reporting issues. Legislative Tracker, that's an application used by Arlington County Department liaisons to give their input on bills being presented in Richmond. There are 24 of these types of applications we're looking to transition to the cloud for the same reasons we outlined in the previous slide and in our opening remarks. The last item on here, emerging, is our emerging technology, or emerging and future technology fund. This is another area where, think back to how much of a disruption the pandemic was to government operations and services. And while future events may not take the same shape as the pandemic, they will require Arlington to navigate disruptions and shocks to our system nimbly and effectively. And one way to accomplish that is by exploiting emerging technologies, like a trusted data exchange system. And a good example of that is blockchain. And normally, when we on the technology side use the word blockchain, most folks say, are you talking about Bitcoin? Are you talking about cryptocurrency? Is this a get-rich-quick scheme? And for those that understand what blockchain is, it's not at all that. What we're talking about is an immutable source of information that could be applied to how we do land records or payments made in our revenue and collection system to create a more trustworthy government. We're looking at artificial intelligence and robotic process automation to help us automate those necessary, but often what many would describe to be tedious back office work, something as simple as invoice processing. We're also closely following the advances made in the world of fintech. Right now, over 100 countries, including our federal government, are piloting or exploring the introduction of a central bank digital currency. And so all this to say, how does Arlington County harness this financial innovation the right way? That's what this fund seeks to address, as well as ensuring that future technologies can be integrated into our existing technology and infrastructure. So to summarize, I'll hand it back over to the Director.
Part of this as well has to be the workforce. Workforce has to change. We've got to re-school, retool, and re-educate our workforce to the new technologies coming onboard. People who can come in and easily averse to that are going to be in our other departments, not necessarily the technology department. Adil is a perfect example of it. There's an intern we hired, and he graduated into being a full-time employee. And as you saw today, I think he did a marvelous job in terms of making a presentation. He knows his matter. But we see this change taking place. So what we're doing, what we're doing here in this slide here is hedging our bets on what's going to come. So we have a lot of guestimates in terms of servers, and we have hardware and desktops and such, and it's based on our thinking last year. What we really have to think about is where we're going to go in the future. And so I reserve the right, or I might be successfully reserve the right, I think, at some point to come back and say, you know what we see happening? We need to do something in this one area, whether it be blockchain, as we've talked about, or it be an artificial intelligence. Those things are going to come. Question is, how soon will they hit us? And what we've tried to do is allow for accommodation of having people look at these things and see if they can accommodate them and bring them into our workforce. When you look at our entire budget, roughly 97% of it is to refresh what we have, replace legacy systems, security enterprise, and less than 3% is for innovation. So saying that, how can we make a difference? It's these folks here in this room who are going to look at every single investment we're making in technology and saying, how do we leverage it the best to change how we do work? If we continue doing work the way we're doing it today, we'll be no better than we are today. And so that's my challenge in this discussion, is to see how we can make those considered investments. So thank you all for taking the time to listen to us today.
We appreciate you. Appreciate the great work. Thank you so much. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues for questions. Mr. DiFranti, first on the draw.
Sure. Thank you. First, the Connect Arlington investment, thrilled about that. And I know that as we work on the digital work that'll come through next summer, I think it's still important to mention 8 million plus, and so important, so thank you for that. On the real estate assessment, the decrease from 3 million to 2 million for the updated system. I have a couple of questions, but I kind of think, with permission, I'll probably follow-up with the manager on those questions because of the nature of what they do, which is a cross-governmental function. Where are, this is risky for me to ask because it may reveal lack of full knowledge. Where are our backups for our cloud? Because every time, of course, I go out through Loudoun County, and when I see their budget, I'm cursing that they're able to drop their tax rate and still have more revenue. But is that, are you at liberty to say what area? I would love it if they were physically located in Arlington, but I don't want that to be cost inefficient.
There's a change taking place, and one of the things we talk about here, and we careful how we talk about it, is something called edge computing, and that's distributed computing. The future is going to mean that you have computing power as close as you can to where the data is being collected. And so the error of going out, going 30.1 miles to Loudoun to store it is still going to be there. And what we do when we go to Loudoun, we use variety, we do, we follow the government's FedRAMP concept of basically distributing the workload, so we use Amazon, we use Google, we use Microsoft, whoever can provide us with the best price, service, and such. And you'll find out, surprisingly, that they all charge about the same price. So there's really no difference. They work in that manner. But the concept of edge computing is really going to be the game changer. And it's a simple thing like, where do I find a parking spot? And how do I get an instantaneous notification? It's the fire chief being able to get immediate access to the emergency room for telehealth where an incident takes place. It's identifying when we're going to have a stormwater event. How do we take care of that, or another storm take place? And so that is the, that is the growth area that's going to happen. Now, I say edge computing, it does not mean we're going to need a big data center like we have today here in the building and down at trades. They're going to be smaller things that actually have the telecommunications capabilities to balance the workload. We talk about cloud smart because we can't just pick everything we have up today. We have over 456 applications in the county today. Many of them, we don't know what they do anymore, but they're there to have built, say, 20 to 30 years ago. And so what do we do? Do we move them, pick them up and move them to the cloud? And the answer is probably not. What we'll do is, we'll say that those have a state, it may be in Loudoun, it may be in Loudoun, or it may be in one of our data centers here, but there are many others that could benefit from the abstraction of moving them to a cloud environment.
If I could add one thing, you asked about the backup to the cloud, and so in a virtual environment, as Jack said, you know, 30.1 miles is, it's not that different from 50.9 miles. But we made a presentation to you in April about commercial sector resiliency, and we're coming to you at the next board meeting with something on micro fulfillment centers. We'll also be back to you in the fall with something, I think, on edge computing, which is, given that the size of these, you know, these data needs can be, actually be made smaller, fit in a closet what used to fit in a really big room, and we're going to update our zoning ordinance to make it so that it'll be less than 30 miles, it could actually be a national landing. Go figure.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, I'll follow up sort of along the same lines and probably show my ignorance or lack of understanding, too. I'm remembering, we were talking about backups at one point, and I think it was with Microsoft, and I think there were major backups in like Seattle and Texas. Am I remembering that correctly? I see a head knot. So some things that we're sort of storing are really far away, so if there's a problem here, they should be hopefully okay. Thank you. And then, an odd question. So we're moving everything to the cloud, which sounds fine, I can see why to do it, I think. What if one day, I mean, might it happen sometimes that we don't have a connection to the cloud, something, there's a cyber attack, there's whatever, and all of a sudden we can't get to the cloud? Is that a possibility? And if so, then what?
The internet's become clogged.
Excuse me?
The internet is becoming clogged now as we speak, and the big players in this realize that. And what they're doing is they're taking whatever mechanism they can to expand that capability and to have more redundancy in it. But it's at a level of maturity right now, I think, where we're pretty confident in what it can do. Yeah, could there be an outage? When we first implemented Microsoft Mail Exchange back in 2005, Microsoft told me, you'll never have another outage. And I remember telling the county manager at the time, there'll be never another outage.
Did he believe you? Did he believe you at the time?
His predecessor.
Okay.
He said, well, what are you calling for? I said, we just had an outage. So things, they happen.
Right.
You pick up, and the good thing about dealing with something like that, they have much more now know-how than we have. We could put a mail server here in the county and maintain it, but we don't have the expertise to truly maintain and operate a data center, like someone say in 30 miles away does.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's where we want to offload that work. Also, in doing that, what happens, I use the word abstraction a lot. The concept is, if you have much of the work being done to maintain the data, the application, make sure it's secure, feeding that's got backups, then this means we're freeing up staff here to do other things, to focus on applications and not necessarily the mechanics of how to keep an equipment running.
Thank you.
And Dr. Miller wanted to add something.
And I come from a generation with backup discs, just saying.
I want to give you a practical example of what Dr. Belter's talking about. In architecting systems, for instance, the recent change to the call processing system for 911, we look at that system as one that requires a high degree of reliability and redundancy. And some aspects of that system are cloud-based in its management and application. That is what allows us to share the core with Alexandria, increase our functionality and have greater redundancy. And it's about building the system so that you have enough of it on premises for disaster recovery, so that you can function when, for instance, that critical system is then cut off. So you may not have, for instance, 100% of your records on call logs dating back right now in infinity, but we may have, you know, the last week, the last two days, the last three days, enough of a system that allows us to be able to continue to operate and provide the valuable service so that it's not completely down for us. But that involves a lot of smart engineering, data system architecture, and those sorts of things, which is sort of what they're talking about in this idea of a larger strategy.
Thank you. I appreciate the reassurance. I can't say I understand all of it, but I do trust you guys. I think it's great. Thank you.
One thing I did want to add, and don't want to spend a huge amount of time on it, but we've talked a little bit about what happens when you lose complete use of your technology, and that was brought up most recently in Nashville when there was that bombing downtown in Nashville that took out the 911 system. And I know Aaron may have a few thoughts on that. We've been working with COG. There is no magic answer there, but there were, remember, there were times where we didn't have any of this technology, so.
Yeah, it's about, you know, we've got to move away from being really good at bouncing back, right, reducing the refractory period. And instead, the thought now is to be able to offer as much of a service, close to 100% you can, in the degraded operating status. So whether that's going back to paper-based forms in 911, whether that's reverting, as we did in the derecho, to alternate systems through which we inform our public and they can, they can get calls into us in 911 by accessing fire stations, things like that. It's about setting up those systems that still allow us to be able to operate and provide as much of the service as we can in a degraded status. And I think that's an important complement to the cloud migration strategy that they're talking about, and that's something that DTS does with each department as they're assessing new applications coming online or how they change things.
Yeah, thank you. Exactly. And then, and this is great, and I love, you're always talking about, we're in an inflection point. I think you've been saying that since I got on the board, and I remember trying to do converting back on the schools, and it's actually always been true. So you're always spot on, and the employees need to change and make changes, and they always have because we are, we're doing things incredibly differently than we did when I first even came on the board or got, you know, involved in things here. So thank you. Appreciate, I do appreciate the work, and I appreciate you putting up with my questions on some sort of, maybe not exactly technological.
Thanks for putting up my outrageous remarks.
All right, we have Mr. Carrington and Mr. Dorsey.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That was, as always, very, very thought-provoking, and we could stay here a very long time discussing the details of that and what drives it. I have only one, you know, basically, I try to understand in its entirety what the smart cloud strategy actually is, because it means, we have discussed a lot about what it means for us, government, but it is also the other side, you know, the residents and the people who are interacting with us. There is money here for, for doing the integration so that, you know, that we have, for example, the payment systems, where I imagine that basically as graduating to a point where every resident in Arlington will have some sort of an account with Arlington County, and, you know, several interactions with Arlington County will actually go through this account, whether these are payments, whether from a parking ticket to your taxes, to maybe your stormwater mitigation fee, whatever, all this. So that means not only, and I understand that this will be cloud-based, I see a lot of challenges how to integrate all these legacy functions into, you know, one cloud. Question is, at the same time, how do we invest in two things? The first is to, you know, make sure that privacy is The first is to, you know, make sure that privacy is, you know, the safety of people's data is, is as, as much safeguarded as possible. And the second is, how do we make sure that, that, you know, that we, we will continue to grow with a, with a strategy that is very clearly laid out, so that we know, you know, what the next levels of that will be? Because I see here still, I see the intention to integrate, but still not, not, everything is integrable. Take, for example, our HR and, you know, the Prism for 14, 40 million, this is one platform, right? And I guess that the, that other systems will be in different platforms.
To answer that question, if I can, one of the things we've insisted upon is we've, we want any cloud provider that offers the service to be what they call FedRAMP compliant. What, that's NIST, standard by NIST, which every year, they do security and privacy risk assessments on the cloud provider. And if they don't meet the compliance, they no longer provide services. Now, there's such a thing called a state ramp. Virginia does not a participant in that. I would recommend, I would hope they, at some point, the new CIO would, would buy that in, but they hasn't. But we, we're making sure that the products we know that are going to cloud are FedRAMP compliant. The other thing about this is, we, and I'll be very honest with you, we, this idea of a cloud smart strategy really is something we really have been progressing since December, that, that late, that early in, I mean, we haven't really gone full hour into this. But, but saying that, there's really a lack of understanding across all the departments in terms of what that means, the things you bring up. And one of the things that Mark and I have talked about is setting up something, a, called a Cloud Center of Excellence, where basically it's an awareness center in the county itself, in the department, that involves all my colleagues, which basically says, if you're going to put something into the cloud, here's what you got to think about. Are you, is it FedRAMP compliant? Are you meeting the privacy, security issues? How are you, what's the consumption model going to be? Because what you're talking about financially is you're moving something which we have here and own to somebody else who then leases it.
Your praise.
And so how do we make sure that happens? The reason we don't have, and I know the commission was concerned that we don't have a definitive document yet, because we've really got to get, we have to define that. We have to get that buy-in, that everybody's doing the same thing. I equate it to like, and I know this is a sad and bad analogy, but like the cross cattle railroad. When that started, every other, every jurisdiction had their own railroad, it had different gauge cars, it went on different schedules, it got on different tracks. But they said, if you want to go from St. Louis to the West Coast, you got to ride on this track, and this is the direction you have to go in. These are the guardrails, this is the security, this is the privacy. So it's really, really a great way, get a consolidated approach, consensus approach to how we're investing in technology going forward. But to do that, it's going to require, it's an education campaign, it's an awareness campaign. Are we there today? No. I think we can get there, though, through these approaches we're taking.
Okay.
Long answer, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, long, long question as well, I know. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what is the investments that we should be, you know, since we're talking about 10 years ahead here, what, what are the appropriate investments to make that, that path as smooth as possible and as inclusive as possible, because that's, that's incredibly important, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to pick up on that conversation, you've well, you know, articulated the benefits of, of a cloud strategy, but there are a lot of risks as well. And one of the things that you mentioned is that you're going to be relying on contractors to, you know, perform a lot of the architecture, cloud architecture services and, and help us through this, this period. So a couple of questions. How do we, one, ensure that we know as much as the contractors to ensure that they're properly accounting for the risks that are inherent with cloud migration, any, anything from privacy, as Mr. Karantopoulos mentioned, to the ability for malware and other, other risks to occur? So give us, give us a sense of how we're going to make sure we are not outsourcing to the extent that we're making ourselves vulnerable. And then I, I think I have a follow-up question for the managers relates to privacy.
Before I answer, Mr. Helya, you want to ask, answer? He's our cloud man, so rather than me say things I shouldn't say.
Sorry to make you move on the Achilles' heel, I apologize.
No worries. I think the, the benefit of what we have right now, and the situation that we have right now, is, as Dr. Belcher has referred to, is we have some amazing staff that is doing this already, and defining our tenants where we are in the cloud. So when we bring in contractors, as we're doing this now, we're providing that supervision, that guidance, and that expertise that we have on staff, to be able to have that knowledge, that insight of what is actually being built in the cloud, providing that guidance, that oversight, and reviewing it. So the knowledge is internal and external of what we're doing with these projects.
So we're finding that we are positioning ourselves to ensure that at least at the very top, we have folks in the, the cloud architecture business who are smarter, smarter than the people that we're hiring to.
We've got, we've got some great people, but we need more people, and so the whole concept of how you recruit, they don't exist today, to be honest with you. That's the problem. They're all some of the highest-paid jobs, and if they, if they've got those skills, they're working for Google, Microsoft, they're doing something called Kubernetes, they, they are skilled. And we couldn't afford them. But we can get people who can ask questions, and that's what we're doing. Like Mr. Sevier, who's, who's joined us, he quickly has become pretty, quite good in, in terms of understanding this, and that's what we've got to do. And David's been, the training programs that have been offered to us by both, what, Microsoft, AWS, which have been very, very helpful. I mean, they, they've come with us with open arms, of course, because they see us as really, really a leader in this field. If you look across Northern Virginia, we're pretty far out there. We, I guarantee you, I know my colleague in Loudoun is watching this right now, used to work here, and he would tell you the same thing. Even though they're in a hotter data center field, we're, we're really progressing pretty fast.
And I think for the, the managers relates to, to privacy, so, I mean, and this is no offense to you all, I mean, you all are brilliant in ways that I could only ever aspire to be, but as you think about a lot of the concerns that people have with privacy, there's usually a techno, there, there's usually an information technology solution out there to assuage the concerns. You know, people who are concerned about who can compromise my data, well, blockchain might be a solution. You know, there's, there's all manner of theories as to how we can deal with privacy issues. But Mr. Belcher, you mentioned something that is a key concern. At the federal level, the standards for privacy are not necessarily consistent with what I think a lot of people would hope and probably what our community expects. So how do we make sure this privacy conversation doesn't become just something among those of you who, who know the technical stuff, but can bring in the broader community who doesn't necessarily have the technical capacity?
So I, I know I'm not supposed to do this, but I would just say the federal government has let us down here. So, I mean, we're way behind where Europe has been on trying to provide individuals the, the opportunity and making, making it rather than, there was actually, I think there was an article in the Washington Post today or yesterday that talked about how you could spend hours and hours and hire someone to, to try to erase some of your digital signatures on the internet. And I started reading it, and I got a headache, because it was like virtually impossible. So, so we, we have done on our website, I know, we have offered people the opportunity, we've adopted some of those European standards on our website, but we, we have to, and we've done this, we did it in Clarendon when we were working on the innovation project there. We got a lot of questions from people. Establish as a baseline some of the NIST standards we've been using on privacy, bring those out. We have posted them on our website. We have more work to do there, though, I would say.
Yeah, I'd just say as an editorial comment, it's an area that concerns me a lot, because some of the, the primary theories of change that we're making behind all of our technology investments are how this can improve life, how this can decrease disparities that exist among people, how technology can be solutions to some of our inexorable problems. However, if people are not going to opt in because of concerns about privacy or because the rules are so vague, that is not only going to minimize the, the efficaciousness of those investments, but actually probably largely reverberate within marginalized communities who are distrustful of big institutions as a whole. So we just have to be really careful about how we manage this so that we don't actually shoot ourselves in the foot for something that could show great promise, and I'll leave it at that. I don't have a, I don't have an answer, but at least I, I like the surface of promise.
Well, I think, but once you solve the digital divide, then all you have to do is solve a different kind of divide, which is that, once people are able to get on the field, that they're excluded because they don't understand the rules or how to use anything.
Well, on a, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Belcher.
No, just to follow up on what you said, I am certainly worried, very concerned, especially developments in machine learning, artificial intelligence. It is moving at such a pace in that area, it's, it is, in many ways, it's frightening, because what you see they're able to do, and how you manage and monitor that, it's going to be critical. Machine learning means you're teaching a machine what's going on. How do you teach that? What biases do you have as you teach that machine? And that's caused us pause in the innovation zone, because we, we have concerns. We want to make sure that whatever we're doing does not violate any of the privacy rules we have in the security rules. But you, that is a critical point. I don't have the answer to that, but you hit, that's exactly a concern to have, so.
Keep thinking about it. This is considerably more pedestrian, but the only question I had was just, you sort of seeing the, the scale of the spend on that workforce device modernization, right? That is a huge chunk of our CIP. So I wanted to just ask, first of all, to make sure I'm mapping the, the program spends with the fund source. Are we paying for that largely, given the short lifecycle of those three- or four-year devices out of pay-go? Or do you know how we, how we're largely funding that program?
We had a small portion that was out of pay-go, but a majority of that is, is out of short-term financing.
Short-term financing, okay. And then, i- is there enough of a resale market, that there's any conceivable sort of buy-back program to participate in those, or even short-term leasing, or nothing like that exists?
We've explored that, it's, it's not that significant.
Yeah.
But we, we have to, you know, we've talked about this for years, the whole concept of bring your own device, which is commercial organizations do.
Yes.
Where you give them an allowance, personal allowance, and they procure their device. And we've explored that in terms of having a device, because we're moving so much to the internet.
Right.
And so much of our workforce is offsite, and right now, as Gilbert said, it's the breakup, which before COVID was 65/35, and now it's 35/65, desktops to laptops.
Right.
That, yeah, that, that's certainly something that we need to consider, especially the other mobile devices like the phones and.
Right. If we were to move to that, do you think that would allow for an expansion of the replacement cycle? Because people can sort of customize devices to their own preference.
It's a change in thinking, and again, it's something that, you know, the DMF and the manager are going to have to think about, you know, when I'm gone here, but is that something that they, is something that's, something that's considerable? Just about every major corporation does that. You go to work for them, they say, here's your stipend, go buy your device, here's the specs, it has a problem, you take care of it. It's again getting in, the whole thing about going to the cloud, the investment we're going to make, it has to be, we have to do our homework in terms of what we're saving by not maintaining things here, or managing things here, or supporting them. And it all shifts. And so of course, what's the shift look like? And so these are all good questions. I don't have any answers to those, but I think.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate that, and I, you know, not to sound like the, the cranky fiscal conservative, but I am thinking about how we, that is, that's a pretty short lifecycle, right? I think compared to, it may be industry standard, but I think at least anecdotally, right, we've had the experience of, here's your new laptop, right? I didn't need it or ask for it, right? So I'm just knowing that the, that we're talking about, you know, multiple, I think it was $24 million over the, the term of the CIP, you know, if there are ways that we can innovate, make sure that our staff has the tools that they need, but also, you know, sort of be good stewards of those resources, I, I hope that'll be something that we can, can approach to in the future.
I would add, we, we've had conversations, and I don't think it's matured yet, if I'm going to get it right, software as a service model, which is that, I like to joke, because I love the image of, of Jack walking down the corridor, you know, every week with a new laptop for people. We don't own them. In other words, we get a new version in, and we just hand it to people because it, it's so much more advanced. So that way you don't actually purchase it.
Yeah.
And go through the asset in three years, but you sort of rent it, and it gets replaced on a very frequent kind of basis. But that, I mean, that model hasn't quite matured yet. But again, I'll just say the same thing I, when I answered Mr. Diffranti, do not expect that to save money. It would, it would provide greater productivity.
Okay. Well, let me say I would welcome that, it sounds really innovative. I would also welcome efforts to think about how we might save money, and whether, you know, especially I can imagine, the functions just vary so greatly, right? Like what you're using a device for in a police car versus what you're using a device for, you know, as a principal planner who's working from home versus what you're using, you know, frontline human services. And so really making sure that, if there are areas where, where kind of one size doesn't fit all, we're cognizant of those.
We continue to explore these things. You know, one of the devices that I have any real interest in is now the Chromebooks, you know, they've been there a while, but they've matured.
Yeah.
They, in fact, I bought one the other day at a fraction of the cost of a laptop. It does everything that a laptop does. It has Office on it, I can print from it, I can store it on, Diane Crash, it's not in the room, I don't think, and I've been talking about that from a, a library.
Really interesting.
A digital equity issue.
Yeah.
You know, you know, we talk about giving people access to the internet, but what if they could check out a Chromebook, take that Chromebook home and start using it, you know?
Very cool.
And the cost, minimal, but the benefit huge, for somebody who doesn't have something like that. So as Mark said, I think these are opportunities in areas we can really get into. Again, is, is it doesn't make sense to do it, make the investment, but the deal was saying, the costs continue to come down if you want, if you want to do basic work.
Yeah.
And many of us, I mean, it's me, I, my basic work is writing text, working on Word and a spreadsheet.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah.
And the internet.
Well, that's really interesting. We have probably reams of data about institutional uses of Chromebooks from somebody's school districts, right, that have adopted them, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's terrific. Thank you so much. I am going to keep moving along just in the interest of time of Mr. Pisanow, Mr. Sevier, Dr. Belcher, which I learned recently, Dr. Belcher. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure with you folks. I think it's probably the last time I'll talk to you, but I wanted to say thank you all for all you've done for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Yes, we're going to, I think, Krista, you're here in person, awesome.
Welcome.
In the flesh.
You didn't, like, drive from the West Coast, did you?
It happens. The things are.
So I'm going to turn it over to Krista for the presentation. She's here with John and Mary, and you can introduce everybody.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and County Board. I'm Krista Abel, the Funds Manager in DES, who oversees our utilities fund budget and finances. And I'll be jointly presenting today with John Lawler, who's our Chief Support Engineer in Water Sewer and Streets, and Mary Strawn, our Chief Engineer at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Hopefully I got your titles right. Arlington's very fortunate to have very stable water and sewer utility systems with sufficient capacity. The state of these systems allows us to rely on master planning documents to guide our future investments and focus on our strategic issues. Our top priority is the steady reinvestment in the systems to maintain their state of good repair and to extend their life expectancy, which ensures, sorry, resiliency for future generations in alignment with the manager's priorities. We also include in our CIP our commitments to the Washington Aqueduct and DC Water's Blue Plains wastewater treatment plant. Blue Plains wastewater treatment plant. And I'd like to note that our update to the sanitary sewer master plan is expected to come before the board for adoption within the next few months. So affordable world and world-class utility services are foundational to equity in our community. The very nature and configuration of our systems serve to advance equity, as the benefits and burdens of our infrastructure are shared across every neighborhood in the county. You can go anywhere in the county and have access to our great services. Our CIP investments are guided by our master plans, which focus specifically on the health of the entire system. These maps are just one illustration of how two of our foundational reinvestment programs for water and sewer mains have been applied throughout the county's neighborhoods. Next slide. The county's water and sewer infrastructure consists of thousands of assets that must be kept in good working order in order to keep these systems running smoothly, and to deliver about 20 million gallons of water per day, and collect and treat about 21.8 million gallons of wastewater. Metrics on the left, on the left side of the slide attempt to convey the size and the scope of these systems. The chart on the right-hand side reflects how we are continually and responsibly reinvesting in these systems at a rate which exceeds depreciation, which helps us maintain our state of good repair. Next slide. Some recently completed project highlights include the slip lining of the 36-inch water main at North Glebe Road. This project put our redundant water source back into service. In the middle, we have a picture of a major repair on our transmission main near the Washington Aqueduct, which served to protect our water supply. And on the right, we recently replaced the main electrical equipment powering the Water Pollution Control Plant's preliminary treatment equipment. Like most processes at the plant, this equipment runs 24/7 and needs a reliable source of power. Next slide. Projects underway include the McMillan Clearwell replacement at the Washington Aqueduct. In the middle, the Gravity One Transmission B1 Project, Phase Two is wrapping up. And at the plant, on the far right, more preliminary treatment upgrades are underway. These are more commonly known as the bar screens, and they prevent large debris that cannot be beneficially reused from entering the system, and that could impact our equipment performance. Next slide. So a new feature in the CIP that we've been talking about at most of the sessions is the interactive map. So we've used that to show utilities projects. So we're showing some of our recently completed projects, our funded projects, and also our proposed projects in the CIP. Some projects, like the water tanks and the Water Pollution Control Plant, are tied to their location within the county and the function that they serve. Meaning that based on how our systems work through gravity or through pumping, we'll have specific assets in certain locations across the county. And we also have some countywide programs, which we saw earlier on the equity slide, which are countywide, meaning that they're all over the county, they're hard to map. But these include our relining programs for water and sewer, and our replacement programs for the water mains and the sanitary sewer collection mains. Next slide. So over the 10 years, the utility CIP is $617 million. We have graphical charts showing the program totals and also the funding sources. You'll see that the plant, the Water Pollution Control Plant, is about 45% of the total CIP, due primarily to the solids master plan projects. We dedicate considerable funding to our maintenance capital program, which helps us maintain our assets in a state of good repair, and this totals about 40% of the utility CIP. On the funding side, existing fund balance in utilities PEGO comprises about 33% of the funding, with new bonds another 44%. And I wanted to note here that our other funding source includes our inter-jurisdictional partner contributions from the regional partners who we treat wastewater for. With a large plant capital program, that leads to considerable contributions from those partners, as they contribute proportionally based on their flow to the plant. Let's see. This slide shows our list of projects for the 2022 bond referendum. The total referendum amount is $177.4 million. This is the first time that the utilities will have a referendum since 2008. And that referendum was for the Master Plan 2001 projects at the plant, which expanded the treatment capacity, and also upgraded our liquids handling processes. And those projects took place between 2001 and 2011. This time around, you'll see the crux of our bond referendum is to fund the regen suite of projects at the plant, also called the solid master plan. And these are for the solids handling improvements at the Water Pollution Control Plant. This referendum funds the multi-year effort at the plant spanning fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028, and would ensure that we have the funding authority to enter into multi-year construction contracts. Also funded in this referendum is our share of the Washington Aqueduct upgrades, which totals $15 million over fiscal year '23 and '24. And finally, we've also included $2.9 million for the construction of the Gravity One Transmission Main B2 Project in fiscal year 2024. And I'll note that the utilities' bonds do not take away from the general fund bonding capacity. While we are issuing GO bonds, they're backed by the dedicated utilities revenues from the water and sewer rate. Next slide. So this graph illustrates the current debt service and the anticipated new debt service that we'll be layering on during this upcoming CIP. You'll notice that the drop-off in the existing debt service, which were due to the large upgrades at the plant for the Master Plan 2001 project, the drop-off starts to happen in fiscal year '26 and '27. We use this projection as a guide to help us schedule our projects and to maximize affordability. We're mindful of the impact of the debt service on the water and sewer rate, and ultimately on our ratepayers. Next slide. And now, I'll turn the presentation over to John Lawler to discuss the projects and the programs in more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Krista. Here's a comprehensive list of our water and sewer maintenance capital projects and programs. These are primarily to replace and rehab. So these projects ensure that our system, water and sewer systems, continue to operate in a state of good repair, so that we can provide our customers safe potable water, and then safely convey that water back to the Water Pollution Control Plant. On the next slide, I'll highlight a few of our key projects. So the first one's the Washington Aqueduct. Continue to fund our share of their ongoing operations and maintenance projects and their capital projects. Our share is about 17%. Sewer lining, that's our primary method for rehabbing and replacing sanitary sewers. So that doesn't involve any open cutting in the roads that disturbs the neighborhoods or anything like that. We can do that trenchlessly. And so that program's really split between large diameter, which is sewers that are 15 inches and greater in size, those are considered trunk sewers, as well as the infiltration and inflow. They're basically the same thing, but the INI program is for small diameter sewers under 15 inches. And so the large diameter ones are a little more complex, and they require a little more planning, bypassing and stuff. But, you know, reducing inflow infiltration is a big key driver in reducing the flows that come to the Water Pollution Control Plant. Infiltration is basically groundwater seeping into the sanitary sewer via cracks in the joints, cracks in the pipes, and things like that, whereas inflow is illicit connections from like roof drains that are tied to the system, and some pumps and things like that. Next, the water main replacements. That's primarily to replace the cast iron water mains that have a history of breaking with new ductile iron pipes. We do about five miles every two years for that program. Next slide. Here's our water distribution projects portfolio. You know, really, the key goal for this program is to ensure that we have adequate potable water capacity for our customers. However, you know, water usage in Arlington County continues to decline, basically due to more efficient drain fixtures and appliances. And so, really, our, the projects you see on this table are more about improving resiliency and redundancy for our system. So now I'll talk about a few of the key projects. So Krista mentioned Gravity Transmissions B2 and B3 earlier. Basically, B1 is completing construction right now. That was split into Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One was with Dorothy Ham Middle School, and Phase Two is wrapping up construction this summer. This will provide redundant water mains to the RB Corridor. I will begin the planning and scoping process for B2 and B3 following completion of B1. In the middle is the Fort Meyer Heights Water Main Project. That's where we're hanging a 12-inch water main along, under the roads, Queen Street Bridge, Route 50, on the left side of the bridge. And that will improve the pressure of the Fort Meyer Heights neighborhood. And then we have the source reliability, source water reliability and air connections. That's to improve redundancy from our regional partners and improve our supplemental emergency supply. Right now, our consultant is wrapping up the first draft of our resiliency study, and that will guide our future investments. One project that's wrapping up construction in this portfolio right now is the North Palatton Street Water Main Project, where we built a 16-inch water main that's tying into the Fairfax Water System, and that, we'll have our final walkthrough in that later this week. Next slide. Yeah, Krista mentioned earlier that we're updating the sanitary sewer master plan. We anticipate that to go before the board and fall for adoption. You'll see that's not a whole lot on here, and that's because we have excellent capacity for this system. As part of the master plan, we modeled our whole system based on the COGS, you know, 2045 Future Employment Housing and Land Use Model, and found, you know, again, excellent supply with very few new projects that resulted from that. And as I mentioned previously, our water usage declines, and therefore, our flows decline, so we have great capacity there. Now I'll talk about our one big project here, which is the Spout Run Deep Sewer Project. So the Spout Run Deep Sewer, it's basically the Potomac Interceptor. It's a 33-inch interceptor sewer that carries about 5 million gallons per day. The project limits start in Spout Run Stream, which is located in the median of the Spout Run Parkway, and we all go downhill all the way into Roslyn. Sections of the sewer, it was constructed via tunneling in the 1930s, but some sections are about 100 feet deep. So it's basically, we have to, you know, rehab it via lining, but there's so much flow that, we have to bypass all the flow in order to line the pipe. So as you can see just from the map, it's a very challenging location to bypass, because you have to cross I-66, the Custis Trail, Route 29, Dawson Terrace Park, et cetera, so. So, and we also need an NPS permit, so the project involves a lot of design and planning work. And basically, we anticipate that really starting construction hopefully next summer. And now I'll turn it over to Mary Strawn to talk about the Water Pollution Control Plant and their CIP programs.
Thank you, John. We have several projects focusing on reinvestment in the critical infrastructure at the Water Pollution Control Plant. The largest portion of the spending is associated with the solids master plan upgrades, which were adopted by the board in 2018, and are now known as the Regen Program, which we'll be discussing further in the next slides. There are also significant and continuing investments in refreshing and renewing the equipment, tanks, pumps, facilities, and technologies that keep our community safe. Next slide. The Arlington Regen Program is the largest single investment in the current utility CIP. This program will replace the Water Pollution Control Plant's aging solids handling processes with more sustainable technologies, with full program delivery targeted for 2028. The master plan, which guides the program, was initiated to determine how best to upgrade the plant's solids handling processes. The current equipment has reached the end of its useful life, and the current lime stabilization process is a method which has operational, regulatory, safety, and environmental drawbacks. The first phases of the Regen Program are already underway, and some of the projects have been completed. A request for qualifications was advertised earlier in June to receive information from prospective teams to deliver the remainder of the program. Board approval of the contract award is expected to take place next summer. Staff, next slide, please. Staff in an external stakeholder advisory group undertook an extensive selection process which considered more than 70 potential process alternatives, before recommending thermal hydrolysis pretreatment with anaerobic digestion, which the board adopted in 2018. Collaborating with stakeholders from the neighborhoods closest to the plant and commissions such as C2E2 and the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission has helped minimize community impacts, identify architectural preferences, and consider how to best utilize the recovered renewable biogas. That's just one of the positive outcomes from the program. Renewable biogas moves the county towards the goal of locally generating energy and using renewable resources of energy. This program aligns with and advances our whole-of-government approach to energy and climate policy. Next slide. Following these upgrades, bio solids trucking volumes are cut in half, and five tons per day of chemical lime usage is eliminated. The treatment process relies on energy inputs to generate heat and pressure for the thermal hydrolysis process, but recovers 35% more energy than the process consumes, which will displace existing fossil fuel demands in our community. Regarding the biogas utilization, staff in the external stakeholder advisory group, along with engineering and energy experts, evaluated three potential reuse options: onsite process use and building heat, onsite generation of electricity for plant consumption, and offsite use, either directly to the ART and Wamata Bus Network, or direct into the Washington Gas Pipeline Network. Next slide. And focusing in on the results of that analysis, we determined that offsite usage is the preferred alternative due to its favorable characteristics, particularly with regards to equity, flexibility in operations, and economic viability. Of the offsite options, pipeline injection proves to be the best opportunity for the county to both offset greenhouse gases from fossil fuel-based natural gas, and provide a resilient outlet for the gas that is not reliant on maintenance-intensive equipment or vehicle fueling operations. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Krista to wrap us up.
Thanks, Mary. To wrap up, we'd like to summarize that the utility CIP request aligns with several of the county manager's priorities as laid out in his CIP message. Environmental resiliency continues to be a priority for utilities, as reflected in our major investments at the plant for the Regen Projects and our source water resiliency and redundancy program and initiatives. Utilities focuses heavily on maintaining our water and sewer assets in a state of good repair through our continued reinvestment into existing infrastructure. And our regional commitments for the utilities include the investments at the Washington Aqueduct and DC Water's Blue Plains wastewater treatment facility. And finally, we've worked to create a sustainable funding stream for these investments by aligning with county and utilities' financial policies, so we ensure appropriate revenues are generated and we have appropriate debt service coverage. On the challenges side, we did want to highlight a few. While planning for the execution of the CIP, we also know and echo those concerns from our colleagues across the county. Pricing volatility continues to be a risk, as does the availability of materials and supply chain issues. Staffing, both in-house and contractual, can also impact our ability to deliver projects and programs on time and on budget. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration for the CIP, and we're happy to field your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the work and for the presentation. I will open the floor to colleagues. Just one clarifying question as we get started. You shared with us, Mr. Lawler, that water usage in Arlington continues to decline because of more efficient systems. Is that per capita, or even as Arlington has added population, just sort of overall water use has declined?
It's definitely per capita, but even basically, even though our population continues to increase, it declines slightly, basically.
That is fascinating. It's really interesting, sort of from a utility perspective. All right, Mr. Karantonos.
Yeah. It's also, we had some very dry years, so the use of potable water to, you know, and to the gardens was huge. The last three years have been far, you know, wetter, in a way, so that's probably a factor to that. But it's a good thing, because it shows also that, you know, private investment, like putting the right type of plumbing, et cetera, is a good thing. So I have one critical question, and I remember that from my visit to the plant. We still depend, I mean, there is a proviso to look to increase the resiliency of our system, especially the issue of the dependency from the De La Carlia plant and the famous Aqueduct that comes across the river. This is this one red line. Yeah. So, the question is, what are our plans for diversifying a little bit our collaboration with the other Northern Virginia regional, the Fairfax system? And how would this investment, this $38 million, take into account something like that?
Yeah, our consultant is partnering.
Mike Collins with DES. There's a number of, it's a great question, because regional water supply and resiliency is a critical issue for this region. In fact, this morning, we were briefing Senator Warner on trying to ensure that we incorporate some funding for a study in the Water Resource Development Act. So there are a number of studies underway that we partner in, including with ICPRB, including with the Washington Aqueduct Corps of Engineers. The $38 million that's put out there is really an aspirational for long-term planning for a number of specific projects, like the one John mentioned at North Palatin, which connects us directly with Fairfax Water. John's also leading a study to look at other connections with Fairfax Water that will provide us greater resiliency in the short term. But a huge chunk of that money is to invest in regional solutions, which could involve anything from anything from securing rights at a quarry, finding other alternate source water, larger connections with Fairfax, other crossings of the Potomac River. Any and all of those are potential options. And so the funding that's there is really long-term and placeholding for significant investments. Did that answer the question?
That answers my question and addresses my concern about the long-term, you know, resilience for the calls.
Very important issue.
Yeah, Mike, don't move, because I'm going to just follow up one quick question on long-term. How long-term is long-term? Because we're pretty redundant now. I think there's some connections. I mean, that we've got, you know, ways to help each other. If Fairfax has a problem, or D.C. has a problem, we can move water back and forth to some extent.
We do. We do have a number of, we have great relationships and partnerships with all of our partners, our utilities in the region, which is really a great thing about working in this area. And we do have connections that can really help sustain us in critical issues. But the region as a whole has one source water, which is the Potomac River. So as a whole, Fairfax, Prince George, Montgomery, Washington, D.C., Alexandria, we're all relying almost exclusively on the Potomac River.
I thought there were quarries in Fairfax or Loudon.
There are. So Fairfax and Loudon both have quarries. Fairfax's quarry is actually off of the Aquaquan, though, and it's not really accessible to us. Likewise, Loudon's quarries, they're much smaller. So we do have reservoirs farther upstream in West Virginia that actually can provide, can supplement river flow under drought conditions, but can't address sudden, unexpected impacts on the river.
Thank you. Yeah, we do want to get some redundant, so it's not just the river, because something goes into that river, we're all in big, big trouble. Okay.
Verreal challenge, right.
Thank you. That wasn't the question I intended to ask. Is that okay? All right. Thank you. I had a couple, but I think I'm fascinated. And maybe, could you talk just a little more about the work that's happening in the Water Pollution Control Plant? Because it looks to me like we're almost getting it to be a closed system, like we're producing energy, we're getting, you know, soil amendment, that we're really going to be changing, because I don't think right now it's nearly that kind of, what would you call it? I mean, it's just kind of a really nice loop, where we're not kind of wasting anything. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? And how long will that take?
Yes. We do currently, with our lime stabilization process, the bio solids are beneficially reused by being land-applied in agricultural fields elsewhere in the state of Virginia. What this new process allows us to do is take advantage of the carbon inherent in the wastewater and recycle it locally within Arlington. So we create a higher-quality bio solids product that has more beneficial applications, can be used in a number of different formats, in addition to land application. And we're creating this biogas, which can be recycled locally as well.
That's really cool. A couple more just security things. Backup generators or something? Power goes out, the pollution, the plant continues to work, right? Is it backup generators we're using?
The plant has a full set of generators that can power the entire plant in the event of a power failure.
Okay, great. And that, those can go for three days?
Yes, they're biofuel, natural gas, and diesel, and so they can power the plant for a number of days.
Okay. And I saw that you could, obviously not on an emergency basis, but will produce gas that could power the plant itself. I saw that was, you decided not to use it that way, but that's something that could happen.
That's correct, yeah. Combined heat and power, electricity generation was considered onsite, and that was part of our kind of equity consideration, that we didn't want to concentrate the emissions from that biogas production and utilization on the plant site. So our civic associations next to the plant have some strong reservations about us doing that.
Okay. Would make it a lot more secure, though, if you could just kind of keep it going. Anyway, that's just another, I'm always worried about this. And I will just say, which I'm sure you're quite aware, I talked with Congressman Byer at an event, and he was going over a little briefing on what the Army Corps of Engineers is doing, and they're apparently looking at a project to help protect our pollution control plant from flooding, from the Potomac. And how is that, when is that, how is that proceeding? When would that be? I think it's just kind of like, they're talking about it now, it's not.
Yes, that's at a very early stage. The Army Corps of Engineers is considering designing and constructing a flood wall, essentially between the bike trail and the plant, to protect it from a major coastal storm. So that is in the very early concept stage. It's at about 5% design. It requires congressional funding, and so I think it's going to be a slow process for approval and implementation.
And would it destroy some of the nice river restoration that we've done?
I don't think it'll have any impact on the stream restoration project. Between the bike trail and the plant fence is really just kind of a grassy area.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I've taken up, I've kind of slipped in a bunch of questions. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. DeFrenti.
Thank you for, I mean, Slide 20 is amongst the coolest slides I've ever seen, and thus I will have questions about it. Is there a way, I mean, you mentioned that we would use the biogas, we could use the biogas for our ART system, but as we transitioned to electric, it would then go to Washington Gas?
Pipeline injection into the Washington Gas Network is our preferred option at this time, and that gas line serves the ART bus fleet and the Womata fleet. So once we inject the biogas into the pipeline, it can be used for vehicle fuel. But that does not tie us to those bus fleets, and so when they go electric, we would still be injecting in the pipeline and still have that customer as Washington Gas.
And the need for Washington Gas, irrespective of whether, you know, overall gas use goes down, do, maybe I should know this, is there a life of the plant that we're creating? Is it a 50-year or 60-year or?
We typically view our life cycle as about 20 years, and so construction is anticipated to be complete around 2028. And then, so the lifespan where we would look to reinvest would be in the 2048, 2050 timeframe.
Great, that's helpful. I only have one other question, which is just on, and I don't know that it's for you, but maybe, the question is about water and wastewater capacity and the analysis on F-25 and F-30. Does that, is it possible, or could it include, you know, it's marginal, but are you a part of the, as we think about missing middle, there's very little delta in terms of increase, but do you know if, do we know if there's that discussion with respect to capacity? Has it all looked at the impact that missing middle might have on the need? Or is it, you could also, it also could well be true that it's so fractional, it's such a small percentage increase, that it might not be strong? I guess, John, you may be phoning for.
Yeah. We've been coordinating with that study, and we're not concerned about it. You know, that growth will be spread throughout the county and come very gradually, so we have plenty of capacity to serve all those neighborhoods. You know, for sanitary, our minimum sewer size is eight inches, and that, you can serve thousands of homes on, you know, an eight-inch sewer, so we have lots of capacity.
Great. It also says in this that this facility will be energy-positive, which is, thinking about my sense of the history of this, is thrilling for me. So, thanks, Madam Chair.
I'll echo the points of commendation for the innovation here, and it is very cool to see, and appreciate all of your work to not only deliver such basic services, but to be looking innovatively towards the future of them. So we appreciate your time today. We'll move to your colleague, speaking of utilities and stormwater management, invite Ms. McBride to come join us, who I know has been working incredibly hard over really the past couple of years on this. So, thank you so much. We'll follow up if we have any further questions in writing, but appreciate your time today.
Thanks.
Thank you for everything you do. I'm scared to think if this wasn't working, what would happen. Thank you.
We're so glad you knew.
Sorry, it's a Tuesday. Oh, no.
Stuck in a desk here. For the record, Demetri McBride, for the Stormwater Division of the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management, thanking the board for its time and consideration. The 2023-2032 Capital Improvement Program represents a nearly tenfold increase from the last pre-COVID 10-year CIP, in which the capacity and infrastructure account for nearly two-thirds of investments. As summarized in the manager's CIP message, this proposal responds to dramatic, sorry, system needs for mitigating inland flooding and risk, increased regulatory demand, and meeting standards for state of good repair. The three columns here capture the general areas of the stormwater program, which, following successive years of repetitive and significant storms, experienced two significant changes. One, the transition to a focus on resiliency, and two, away from independent to interfacing programs. Elaborating on this latter point, the CIP planning now cards out a strategy for projects that can deliver benefits across two or all three general areas simultaneously, increasing both cost-effectiveness and performance. Next, please. While the stormwater program maintains the original three areas, updated goals and objectives now drive program, process, and execution improvements across the program portfolio. This includes capital program design that increases co-benefits, performance, and cost-effectiveness, as well as risk mitigation and resiliency. In addition, new tools, services, and strategies will increase regulatory progress and state of good repair. Next, please. Further, through the ramp, the stormwater program is creating an equity framework that will measure need and responsiveness in underserved communities. The canvas for this initiative is the social vulnerability map shown here, which highlights areas of moderate and high social vulnerability. Data from the ramp has identified areas of flood, I'm sorry, future flood risk, some extending into equity-target areas. Vulnerability and risk assessments now in development will support additional equity overlays that will inform future investments in capital projects, maintenance, and equipment in these areas. We refer to needs, and this now-familiar map has garnered data over the past 16 years to identify critical gaps in stormwater management and near-term priorities. The dots indicate flooding locations and frequency, and the gradations of pink and fuchsia indicate flood intensity. Not surprisingly, this map corresponds to capital investments over past several years, some of which are called out in the next slide. Next. This slide contains a sampling of infrastructure, water quality, and capital maintenance projects in various phases, from design to construction. From map to visuals, this slide more fully illustrates more than 25 million in capital projects now in construction and to be completed this calendar year. There are a number of completed projects that supplement program performance as well. For example, outfall construction, which also acts to sustain and protect other large-scale capital investments, such as stream restoration projects, or to crosscut with other county principals, such as biophilia. In brief, the Hardscape system encompasses more than 260 miles of pipe and more than 21,000 pipe and built assets. 32 miles of stream remain from the original 93 miles, which, before 1940, provided extensive overland relief and served as the county's flood mitigation network. The built and natural assets that we designed, construct, and maintain now must provide flood mitigation and water quality improvements across a community that is densely developed and roughly 43% impervious. I will now turn the presentation over to Krista Bell, the Stormwater Fiscal Manager, for a review of the CIP financials and funding information.
Thanks, Demetri. Over this 10-year period, investments in the stormwater program total $331 million. As the manager had identified in his CIP message, stormwater is an emerging priority. The program reflects the significant effort that will be required to enhance and update the county's stormwater infrastructure during the next 10 years. This CIP is a $298 million increase over the last 10-year CIP, and while our last CIP from last year was only a three-year CIP, we did do a planning effort over the whole 10-year period, and this is a greater investment of $108 million over that plan. Approximately two-thirds of the program funding is for stormwater capacity improvements, and one-third is for maintenance capital and water quality projects. The program is funded through a variety of sources, including stormwater pay-as-you-go funding and spending down our existing fund balance. However, the primary portion, about 85%, is funded through bonds and bond premium. Stormwater's pay-as-you-go funding is currently generated through our sanitary district tax, and in the future would be generated through the stormwater utility rate revenue. Our maintenance capital program, at about 15%, would be funded primarily through the stormwater pay-as-you-go funding, while the remaining 85% for capacity and water quality projects would be funded through bond funding. And one thing I'll note here is that while we're pursuing various grant funding opportunities, at this point, none of those are firm commitments, and it would be premature to include these in our CIP funding scenarios. Here's a summary recap of the stormwater CIP by program with annual totals. The total we're proposing is $331 million over the 10 years. Similar to our transportation CIP, we have included a 20% cash flow adjustment to reflect project complexities that will likely result in some projects being delayed, and that brings our total down to $265 million. We feel this is a more realistic projection of actual spending and the funding that we'll need to generate. We've included the adjustment since there are a number of factors that can delay projects. Some of these factors include the significant variability and uncertainty of a voluntary land acquisition program. The pricing and timing could be influenced by the timing of future flooding events. Other factors include securing easements, complexity of design, policy decisions, public engagement on projects, waiting on our project partners for approvals and permits from neighboring agencies such as VDOT and VRPA and the National Park Service. And during construction, there could also be unforeseen site conditions that could also delay construction. And finally, supply chain issues could impact both timelines and costs for projects. At this time, we can attribute these factors to, on a project-by-project basis, and it could provide a false sense of security if we were to do so. So we're applying the adjustment at a high level across the whole program to recognize that there are program risks. Next slide. This slide shows our listed projects for the fall 2022 bond referendum. We have capacity projects totaling $34 million, and water and stream quality projects totaling $5.8 million, for a grand total of $39.76 million for the next referendum. These include some multi-year projects that span up to fiscal year 2028, and include Spout Run, Torreson Run, Stowman's Run, and Gulf Branch Stream Resiliency Projects. Next slide. This slide shows our forecast of bond issuances from both the existing and the new referendum. We're projecting to use the existing 2020 referendum for funding needs in fiscal year '23 and '24, and then we'd start issuing on the new referendum in fiscal year 2024. I'll note that the amount of the GEO bonds that are issued for Stormwater Fund do not impact the general fund bond capacity, since Stormwater has its own dedicated funding source to pay the debt service, and this is also included in our financial policies. Next slide. As we're entering into new territory with issuing successive-year debt for the stormwater program, we want to be transparent about how we would pay for this debt service while also staying in alignment with our financial policies. This chart shows the projection of debt service based on the 10-year CIP, and it includes as the baseline our current debt service for the 2021 GEO bond, which is about $935,000 annually. And while we're currently on the sanitary district tax, you've given us direction to implement the stormwater utility, which would then fund the program through implement the Stormwater Utility, which would then fund the program through fees. So, starting in 2024, you'll see the rate per equivalent residential unit, or ERU. These are very early, very preliminary projections, based on the feasibility study we conducted previously. Each year during the annual budget process, we'll calculate the rate necessary to generate the required funding and bring that to the county board for your approval. The rate would be calculated to generate sufficient funding to cover not only the debt service, but also our O&amp;M budget and the pay-as-you-go contribution for the capital program. As you can see, the utility rate is projected to double over the 10-year period. Currently, we have one of the lowest household impacts in the area. Based on other jurisdictions' infrastructure needs, we would likely remain regionally competitive, as other jurisdictions would also be raising their rates to pay for their programs and to meet their permit requirements. Now, we'll move into the specific programs and projects within the CIP. As mentioned earlier, the Capacity Improvement Program is the largest program in the CIP at $229 million, and this is 70% of the total CIP. This slide shows a listing of all of the capacity improvement projects within the program. The five critical watersheds total $170 million, or 74% of this program. These watersheds are 50% of the total Stormwater CIP overall. Overall, land acquisition and overland relief is a key part of providing flood mitigation for many of the watersheds. The extent varies watershed-to-watershed, based on the individual solution for each watershed. It's about run, for example, land acquisition comprises about 60% of the total cost, but varies down to minimal amounts in Crossman Run. I'll now turn it over to Demetri McBride to review the specific projects in the Capacity Improvements Program, as well as the other capital programs.
Thank you, Krista. Before we more closely profile key projects of the CIP, this watershed map is a convenient reference for the distribution of priority projects and multi-phase watershed-scale flood mitigation improvements. It is important, at the outset, to note that the capacity program is not focused on individual properties. Rather, these are investments to preserve the integrity of other infrastructure, such as transportation sewer and water lines, secure economic and commercial activity, promote insurability and marketability within the county, and for overall flood risk reduction. Next, please. Spout Run is well-known to the board and is one of the largest impaired watersheds for repetitive floods and losses. This and the following project profiles summarize the engineering strategies to be used and the target outcomes. Spout Run is uniquely constrained. Quite simply, access to the piped infrastructure is restricted, and it presents maintenance challenges. As a result, the built main system itself cannot be effectively improved. For that reason, voluntary property acquisition and overland relief is a principal element of design, whereas, Krista mentioned, in other watersheds, it is integrative and supplemental. Next, please. The Columbia Pike and Greenbrier Project shares a location with one of the county's first newly-installed flood depth sensors and signals. Deep flooding and losses have increased here over the past three years. Like the other priority projects profiled here, it is an area projected for increased climate-driven inundation. This site also serves vulnerable populations identified under the ramp equity analysis and map. Lover Run and Crossman Run are also multi-phase watershed-scale projects with concept designs that deploy all elements of the blended engineering approach under flood-resilient Arlington, including pipe improvements, addition of tertiary infrastructure, property acquisition, and distributed detention, such as that demonstrated by the Cardinal Elementary School Detention Vault. Next, please. The CIP also reflects extensive continuous engagement since the 2016-2019 extreme flood events, with community organizations, civic associations, watershed civic association alliances, neighborhood coalitions, and Arlington Public Schools. The CIFED dialogue has produced two Federation Support Resolutions and robust input from community representatives. This engagement will not end, but remains dynamic and future-facing. Next, please. We now move into the water quality focus area of the Stormwater Program and call out specific projects and initiatives that advance the county's compliance with the MS-IV permit and the Chesapeake Bay Program, the latter of which is increasingly promoting resiliency-influenced design. Next, please. This slide samples active green infrastructure and pond and stream restoration projects in both continuous design and construction. These projects offer a combination of sustainability benefits, including local water quality improvements, pollutant reductions required by the MS-IV permit, and diverse co-benefits, including public safety, infrastructure protection, and ecological improvements. Next, please. In great part, the Water Quality Program is scoped and designed to meet the county's regulatory compliance and reporting under the MS-IV permit. These are actually three permits and five-year cycles each, with specific progressive compliance benchmarks for each. We are currently one year into the second-cycle permit for nutrient and sediment reduction. Historically, these reductions have been most robustly credited under pond and stream restoration projects. While the Virginia DEQ has restructured the existing stream restoration crediting system, the CIP planning still anticipates meeting the second-permit milestones. In addition, the Stormwater Program is launching an MS-IV compliance strategy study to consider other potential credits and to ensure a high-performance, cost-effective regulatory program. Next, please. This budget sheet rounds out the three general focus areas of the Stormwater Program, concluding with capital maintenance. The county's stormwater assets have been meticulously inventoried, and we note here that roughly 54% of those assets are more than 60 and up to 80 years old. Inventories and inspections under the operations budget greatly inform this 10-year capital investment proposal, both to ensure state-of-good repair and, as will be seen, to cross-support other infrastructure. Next slide, please. That critical cross-support is demonstrated here. The Four Mile Run dredging project is governed by a memorandum of agreement with the City of Alexandria and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Cyclical dredging restores the full capacity of Four Mile Run, which serves as the county's greatest single corridor of flood mitigation and overland relief. The total project cost here is also shared with the City of Alexandria. The Dum Barton and Military Road culverts are significantly impaired, and their replacement will also secure, respectively, overhead transportation and water utility infrastructure, as well as critical sanitary sewer stations and equipment. To the greatest extent, capital maintenance projects are partnered with other capital projects to take advantage of shared expenses and to enhance cost-effectiveness. Next, please. This is a summary overview of a complex program proposal to meet the manager's overarching objectives to address critical needs and maintain state-of-good repair. The challenges are significant, including lack of access to the system amplified by climate volatility. To help make our communities more resilient, a voluntary property acquisition program that works with individual property owners over time will be used to help provide overall watershed and flood mitigation improvements. Taken together, the program and the CIP generate both current policy options, such as acquisition, and future considerations, such as special overlays and construction criteria for inundation zones. Next, please. We thank the board and the county manager for this opportunity to present on the Stormwater 10-Year CIP proposal and welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Very significant area of expenditure in the CIP, but necessarily so. I really appreciate the good work that you've outlined for us, really across the county, but as you've noted, some of the largest investments in the Spout Run watershed, since that is some of the ripest work that you have been up to, I know. Colleagues, open the floor for questions. Ms. Garvie, do you want to begin?
Yeah, I'll just start with -- actually, this is just sort of just making sure I understand this slide, and then we'll go on to other questions. It's on number 11, and it's the implementation adjustment. Listening to you talk, that sounded to me like what I'm used to calling contingencies. Is that kind of correct? Is it kind of acting as a contingency? And it seems like it's about 20% of what we think these are going to cost, so that we've got space to -- if they increase by another 20%, we're probably okay. Is that correct? In my assumption, you're looking like not, so please correct me.
We're actually going the other way. So, the full need for the CIP is $331 million. We anticipate not everything will go according to plan.
Right.
So, we're taking that adjustment upfront, just -- and that gives us an idea of -- and this really interplays into the rate forecast and what we'll be asking for our property owners.
But what I'm assuming is that adjustment is that you're leaving the wiggle room to increase it above the 331, but you're telling me, no, you're leaving -- you think the projects might cost less?
We think the spending might be less. Go ahead, Ms. Garvie.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not used to that concept, so.
No, it's -- we have found, over the course, going back and looking at all our projects, that we have come up with really good plans. They never quite go as we expect.
Right.
And so, if a project was priced at $100 million four years in the future, by the time we get there, it turns out the design's taken longer.
Right.
The permitting's taken longer.
And it costs more.
And, well, sometimes it costs more, but on average, we've done this analysis, and we think we're pretty comfortable at saying, we think it's going to cost that much, but over time, we've seen that it's actually -- we only spend 20 -- we spend 80% of what we had thought it was going to be.
Oh, that -- I'm just -- it's a new concept for me. Thank you for clarifying. I'll let other colleagues ask questions. That's just --
If I could, just to put a point on this, it's analogous to the concern that we had at Metro for years about a capital program, which was priced appropriately, but their ability to, you know, procure the vehicles during a given timeframe was reduced from their ambition. So, their spend was less. It's not a reflection of our belief that overall costs are going to go down. It's the amount of program that we're able to deliver within the timeframe is more realistically discounted to what we expect will happen versus what our broad ambition is.
Thank you.
It's very helpful.
The relationship with carryover in the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you.
I think Mr. DiFrenti saw first, and then we'll go to Mr. Krentonis.
My question is on slide 13, the very next one. So, if I understand what you just shared, is that $331 million is our estimate for full cost to get to a more flood-resilient system? And so, we had $50 million in 2020, we're down a little bit, and am I understanding the ramp's process right, that that is, we have a lot still we need to design in order to figure out the rest of the spend? Is that the out-year spending? Is that correct?
Well, we've planned the spending over a number of years. The reason we're asking for kind of the upfront amount in the 2022 bond referendum is to give us that multi-year spending authority for -- just so we don't go in the negative. It's more of an accounting.
Yeah.
Because we need the kind of funds authority to issue those multi-year contracts.
Sure.
We still think, cash-flow-wise, this new referendum will take us through fiscal year '28 construction needs.
Got it. Okay.
And we do have a plan for each of the projects of what the funding is, you know, when we're using those bond funds, and how that relates to each year, and what amount that we'll need to issue year by year.
Got it. We have to have specificity for the bond. The projects have to be fully planned and engineered, so that's one thing, but the underlying assumption that I'm coming with is, you know, on a relative basis, knowing we have significant investment to get to more flood resilience, I have some attraction to earlier than later, and that's the assumption that I didn't really share with you when I was stating it, but if we don't have specificity, it didn't work. So.
If I could just add on to that, because you referred to the ramp as well. The ramp is now at a phase, which we anticipated, where it delivered sufficient data to show us future vulnerabilities, and I'm talking, you know, 2040-ish or beyond. And those are in additional watersheds in the county that are separate apart from these five watersheds. In addition, the ramp is -- so, we added those watersheds. It allows for a greater equity and balance in the ramp. It is also going to give you long-term for beyond this 10 years, and it's also going to give you, in a more targeted sense, in the vulnerability assessments, what protection measures are needed to secure critical services, critical, what they call, public sites and facilities. And those are government facilities rendering critical services and operations. So, I think that Krista is referring now to this 10-year period, looking at those near-term, and the ramp is going to continue to validate that during the 10 years and also to go beyond.
Got it. I think that helps. There's parts that I'll need to learn over time, but it seems as though we're deep into the ramps, and I remember, you know, three years ago, I was thinking about the ramp process all the time and trying to understand it. I guess on slides 14 and 15, this is the only other question I have. I mean, I'm under the impression that, you know, future debt, that green goes up, but there's not yet a crest, and sometimes -- and so, the question also, if you look at slide 15, there's a bunch of projects where all of the spaces are filled in early, but -- and I know that we will never be done, and this is resiliency and not, you know, it is just not a thing that we will make it impossible to be flooded in a climate change environment, but is there a time when we might get close to knowing sort of when we would get closer to a flood resiliency standard that's catching up a little bit with this moving target? Or is there a time when the green graph might crest, but not, you know?
Well, is it plateauing?
I think resiliency is going to show you, and it's always going to be tiered. It's going to be what are your most critical vulnerabilities, what is going to have the greatest impact, what is the probability of damage, future damage, and what is the impact of that if it occurs? So, I don't think we have a crystal ball, but, you know, Krista and I have worked very closely together to look at the utilities, and I know that it's a different system, but when you saw that wedge chart in utilities, utilities has been taking care of its critical systems and its operations long enough, where that graph, that bar, is kind of inverted a little bit. So, the goal is to get there. It's not an endless escalation up. You're going to get to a point where you protected your sites.
Yeah.
Your critical, you know, public facilities, your commercial areas, public protection and safety, your transportation and other infrastructure, and really, what you're doing is then just projecting for future extreme, but you're giving yourself 10-year cycles to look at. You're going to be updating your climate projections every 10 years anyway.
That is very helpful, and I think any other questions. I don't want to get too into the technical pieces of it, but that's super helpful, and I know others will say it, but grateful for all the work of both of you and your teams.
Thanks. Mr. Krentonis?
Thank you. You just covered what I wanted to actually ask.
Great.
When it will be plateauing and what does this mean for maintaining that? So, that's fine. And you also elaborated a little bit on the -- on thinking on equity and how this distributes over the territory, because I think we are just at the beginning of understanding that properly, these are not only investments in stormwater management, they are, you know, bigger investments in infrastructure, and I think that this will have a footprint. A quick question on streams and water quality projects. The Gulf Branch Stream Resiliency, which is under water quality. So, this is coming up, and I see that in fiscal year '23, there are $300 -- $3 million, and then it ramps up into implementation '24 and '25. Do we anticipate a similar project like with Dalton Run, with the tributary we're just finishing?
We're lucky to have Jason Papa Cosmo with us here in the room. I'm going to bring him over, and if I could just clarify, when you say similar, are you talking about the design or are you talking about the outcomes?
The design and, of course, the outcomes. The outcomes should -- they're prescribed, right? So, we have to be compliant with the Chesapeake Bay.
Right. They do kind of change in other elements, too. We have trail erosion, we have stream erosion of different kinds, we have sometimes other infrastructure that's exposed that has to be built, the protections into the design, but all that, Jason.
And could you recap the front end? Sitting back there, I couldn't hear you quite.
The question is from fiscal year '23 to '25, so it seems that we are in -- we're planning to invest in the resiliency and restoration of the Gulf Branch stream. The question is whether we are going to The question is whether we are going to approach it the same or in a similar way that we did Dalton Run? Or are we, you know, figuring of any, an improvement?
Oh, okay. No, I understand now. It's a good question. We, so Tributary B, I think when we were talking about that, we emphasized the unique characteristics of that valley. It was tight. It was steep. A lot of, not a lot of room to work. Gulf Branch has some similarities and also some differences. So we're definitely taking the context into account. There's some areas where we'll do similar things. There's some areas where we're actively evaluating other options. In fact, we have the consultant doing an alternatives analysis to look at some different tools and methods and which ones will work best in that context to achieve our objectives. So it's, it's a mix. The short answer is it's a mix. It's not going to be exactly the same, but there'll be some similarities and then some refinements based on the, the context.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Before we wrap up, I had sort of a different flavor of the conversation about the nature of the debt over time, right, and its growth. You know, I'm mindful, we've talked about this a lot with the, the formulation of a new utility structure, that it is sort of a tax to do two things, right? Both raise the revenue to pay for these projects, but also to incent certain types of behaviors, right? Which is to say, by aligning it to the amount of impervious surface on your property. It, it could hopefully also incentivize behaviors where people might convert where popular, possible the more pervious surface or build in ways that create more pervious surface. This is sort of a hypothetical question, I guess, but since we're talking about the intersection of both the capacity overall and this financial tool, to what extent do we think behavioral changes as incentivized by the utility structure could actually reduce the need for further investment in the future?
I'm going to go out on a limb, and I haven't cleared this with Mr. Emanuel, or Mr. Moon first. I think that there is obviously, you know, a purpose and a strong role for behavior and choices on your own property. When we're talking about long-term resilience, when we're talking about flooding. You're talking about a system, but you may be talking about policies, too. And that may be behavioral change more on a, a kind of larger upscaled. It may be, in the second to the last slide, we said, and, and it'll be coming to the board sometime in the not-too-far distant future, should we consider maybe other construction redevelopment criteria and what we know to be inundation zones? I, I think that that's something that has value to consider. Because if you look at FEMA right now, FEMA is really pulling back. The extraordinary losses on a national scale have been staggering over the past decade. And the largest losses are because of flood, although the fires out west are, you know, pretty significant as well. But they're also starting to look at, well, should there be retreat? Should there be different policies? Should you always go? That's why when you go to FEMA floodplains, those criteria are built into the floodplain. So it may very well be that where you have inland flooding, which is 80 to 90% outside of your FEMA floodplains, that may be looking at those FEMA criteria as a future way to make development less vulnerable. And that would be just in the codes and how they're built. So that's behavioral change on a market scale. And then there's personal, you know, level, obviously, you want to be a good neighbor and, and kind of retain on your own side, so there's not erosion, there's not runoff, there's not sedimentation in here.
That's really helpful. So I think, you know, to sort of maybe be glib about it, this is not, for example, the plastic bag tax, where we're hoping we eventually won't collect any revenue, right? Because it's behavioral change. It's really more about these structural and policy changes. But I liked your point about being a good neighbor. And if our, the structure of the utility tax can help incent people to do that, all for the good. So thank you so much. Mr. Doris, can you do the last word?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, this is just really a big picture question. How are you, how are you managing within this, recognizing that it's difficult? The notion of providing remediation to past flooding events and the, the known risks that occur there versus the projected impact of climate change, which has yet to be realized, yet we put out a 10-year capital plan and develop some degree of community engagement around it. So how are you just institutionally balancing how to, how to deal with the known knowns and the known unknowns, to quote Donald Rumsfeld?
Again, and I, I'm sorry, I know that you've heard this. The ramp was extended, of course, by that interim set of data that really directed us to expand the number of watersheds. But what you, what you're looking at now for 10 years, and as Carista and the manager noted, with other unforeseen or uncontrollable events, you could have a little bit of a lag in, in expending those investments. But that 10-year is for what you know now. That's, that's really the kind of data, historical data, and the today. The ramp, which will be completed in 2023. In the interim, we're going to get substantive deliverables, the vulnerability assessments and the risk assessments, and the climate forecast for those other. When I say secondary tier, it's not a secondary tier in any other context other than those may not be immediate flood risk issues, but they have in the projections revealed themselves as being vulnerable in the future. And generally, you update your climate projections every 10 years. There isn't, in the wonky, you know, algorithms that they use, there is not a significant departure, a wild departure, until around 2040, where we're going to see, are things going to be as we had projected? Or are they going to be significantly worse or probably less likely, but possibly there'll be less? But you're still going to be planning. So the ramp is really going to give you, and I don't even see them as segregated. I see them as rolling. You're going to have this 10-year cycle taking care of immediate needs, but once you get done with that 10-year cycle, you could have other areas that have revealed that now they're taking front seat as a critical need. So it's, we're not ignoring a critical issue right now. We do have some others that you're aware of that we have built into the 10-year CIP, because they, they definitely need that attention right now.
Yeah, I just, you know, realized there's this community disconnect. The people who are most concerned about this issue are people who have been impacted in the past and who we need to be engaged on this issue, or people who are likely to be impacted in the future. So we're going to have to be figuring that out as we go along.
Excellent. Okay, Ms. Gavri, you can say the actual last word, and then we'll move on to debt.
Same topic, because I just want to sort of mention again the letter from the Civic Federation, from Alan Gajdada. I mean, I thought that was a very, it was very positive, offering to help. And, you know, that second bullet in your challenge is public expectations and urgency versus public tolerance of significant disruption. I mean, I think that problem, that issue, that tension is going to just get worse. And I really am pleased with the, the response so far from the Civic Federation, and hopefully they can really be helpful with us as we work this with the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you all so much. Being mindful of time, I'm going to turn us to our next category, but this is, of course, only a interim conversation among many, and we appreciate your great work. All right. We're going to invite Mr. Fries to talk to us about debt and then thank again our FAC members, who I think have been very patient. We look forward to hearing from you immediately after that presentation. So thank you so much. Welcome, sir.
All right. Good evening. So I am Jason Fries in the Department of Management and Finance. I am going to go over real quickly both the debt and the debt service, as is included in the county manager's proposed FY '23 through FY '2032 CIP, and how it impacts the county's financial and debt management policies. So as presented, a total of 1.35 million of debt is included in the county's proposed CIP, which includes, sorry, of which 30, 34% of it is general obligation bonds. When looking at the breakdown of those geo-bonds, 21% of that is for general governmental purposes, which is parks, community infrastructure, and the transportation-metro bond referenda, those three individual ones, which you usually see on the ballot. And then the remaining 13% is split just about evenly between the stormwater fund and the utilities fund, which you just heard about earlier. Separately, the school's superintendent releases proposed CIP on May 12th, and that CIP was just adopted on June 23rd. And that amount is 345 million, which is in addition to, it's excluded from 3.9 million listed up, up above there. The total 10-year needs in the CIP are 475 million with, with 345 million of that needing to be in the form of geo-bonds. As we'll talk about shortly, when we discuss the financial policies, both the general government, as well as AHIF, and the APS bonds are included in the county's main financial policies. They are not looked at on an individual basis. Stormwater and utilities, and as you just discussed, they both have their own individual policies. And for that reason, as long as they maintain those coverages and those policies, they are excluded from the county's primary debt policies. So if we go to the next slide, what we want to show here is a breakdown of the general county and APS bond referenda by referenda year. So in the 2022 cycle, which will be this fall, there are $125 million of geo-bonds proposed by the county on our side. This includes $20 million for parks and recreation, $52 million for community infrastructure, and then $53 million for metro and transportation, which is primarily on the metro side. And then, as you see below in the middle, and this is their adopted number, so it's changed just slightly from what they proposed, but adopted, they have $165.01 million. And that is primarily for their Career Center project. And then if you see below, which we, we just spoke about, stormwater, their 2022 referendum is 30, just under 40 million, and utilities is 177 million. So if we go to the next slide, we'll dig a little bit deeper into each of those referenda categories and show what the projects are. So you've already been briefed on all these projects through, since this is the last work session, so we're not going to focus on the projects themselves, just the debt and the associated debt service impacts. When you look at the county projects, you can see that the largest, and this is normally with each cycle that we do, is metro at $43 million. This is followed by renovations of the county's courthouse complex, investments to the court's police building, funding for fire station replacements and additions, and lastly, for paving. On the school side, as we previously noted, the Career Center is the largest item on their proposed 2022 referenda request at $136 million of bond requests and a total overall cost of around 175 million. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the financial policies. And so what we'll talk about is the impact of both the county and the school's proposed issuance of geo-bonds over that 10-year planning horizon, and then that impact on overall debt and the debt service that is supported by the general fund and APS budgets. So the four policies you see here are the county's debt and financial management policies and have remained relatively unchanged for about the past 15 years. Other than we did reduce the debt-to-market value, which is the second policy here, we've reduced it from 4% to 3% a few years ago. So to give you some background, when the, when we begin our CIP, we look at what level of debt is affordable for projects early on. So in the January, February timeframe, we start putting together those estimates and to look at what we can afford over a 10-year planning, planning horizon. This is used to set, you know, what we can afford over those 10 years. One difficulty with this is that, I think, as you all know, the county and the school CIPs are released around the same time, schools is a little bit just before. So for that reason, what we do on the county's side typically is to use their previously adopted CIP as a starting point for the county's CIP. Now, as you know, the last two cycles, we've only done a one-year and a three-year CIP. So that provided some difficulty in coming up with what is the correct numbers to use in the out-years. So that's why, you know, if you may have seen, there's a little bit of discrepancy in those. It's because of the planning. It's really the timing issues between when we put our CIP together and when schools does theirs. So when you look at the four main policies, at top, if you can go back, is the one that everyone's most familiar with, which is the 10% limit on outstanding county and APS debt service, being no greater than 10% of general governmental expenditures. Now, to project this ratio, we take the proposed county and APS bonds. We calculate the combined annual debt service with all existing debt, and then we compare that to total governmental expenditures. These expenditures are forecasted at a growth rate of between 2 and 2.5%. 2 in the early years expand up to 2.5% over the 10-year period. Now, this is what we believe is conservative when you compare it to the average growth and expenditures of approximately 4.5% between 20 fiscal 2013 and fiscal 2022 of the county's budgets. Using those assumptions, the combined debt service that we, we show does get close to that 10% limit, but we actually do remain in compliance at about 9.9%, which is the peak in fiscal years 2028 through fiscal year 2030. The next policy that we look at is the total outstanding debt to the mark, to the market value of the county's tax base, and that being no greater than 3%. We don't usually focus a lot on this one, primarily because if we were ever to get close to this, we would, we would actually exceed the first and the third policy. So debt to per, debt to income and the debt to expenditures would be well in excess of their limits before that one, just based on the, the relative value of properties in the county. So over the 10-year period, this one peaks at about 1.7%. If we move on to the next policy, which is total outstanding debt on a per capita basis, compared to per capita income being no greater than 6%. The per capita income, that comes from the Bureau of Economic Analysis, and forecasted growth is based on historical growth in per capita, sorry, in per capita personal income of 2.4%, which is the growth from 2010 to 2020. Population estimates are from the census, and they are forecasted using growth estimates from the most recent Metro Washington Council of Governments forecasts. When using these assumptions, we do get close to the limit here as well. However, we do remain in compliance at 5.9% in the early years, fiscal '23 and '24, and that falls off to about 4.4% in fiscal 2032. And lastly, the final policy is state, states that debt service growth over the 10-year planning period will be no greater than the 10-year historical revenue growth. And as I just mentioned, that 10-year historical growth is 4.5%. Total county and APS debt service is projected over the CIP to be about 3.8% annually over that 10-year period. So if we go to the next slide, I wanted to show a little more deep detail on the first policy, our 10%, since that's the one that we really focus on, on trying to control the county's expenditure, debt service growth. And to break that down a little bit more detail of what is behind that number. So this is a breakdown. This shows existing county and schools debt service, which is the blue at the bottom, the largest, that's existing debt that we have locked in at this point. And then the next thing you see is the new county debt in red, the new schools debt in green. And then purple, that is the Barcroft debt, the $150 million that was recently approved for that project. It is the estimate of, of that project and the roll-off of that debt. Now, it's currently under a line of credit for a few years. And then, as we work through that project and we have the master development and financing plan, there will be a portion that will be permanently financed. And so this is a conservative estimate of, you know, the full amount being amortized over, over the, over, over the period. But you see, you know, at the margin, that little purple amount and how much it brings us closer to that 10% within the CIP. To give you some context, in the 19 through '28 CIP, which is the last 10-year CIP that we adopted, these numbers also range from 9.4% to 9.9%. In the near term, you know, we're a little bit lower right now than in those previous estimates, and that's due to the constraining of the debt in those two prior shortened CIPs. However, you can see that with that Barcroft acquisition, loan of $150 million and ongoing commitments for previously issued bonds, we do start to creep back up rather quickly to that 10% in the out-years. Though it's our expectation, simply given natural delays in projects and project execution, that we, we won't hit these full values, but we remain conservative and we budget them when the, when the projects are needed to ensure that we have the funding available. So if we go to the next side, slide, this is just a breakdown of the debt service on both the county and APS sides to show that and then the impacts. As you can see, the annual increases to the general fund range from $2.9 million to $6 million annually. On the school side, they range from a decrease of 1.2 million to an increase of 5 million. And then at the bottom of what did want to show, since Barcroft is a new debt, what the impact is there. So this is paid from the AHIF fund, not, not the general fund. It's paid by AHIF funds. And, but it does fall within the county's main financial policies and is not entirely separate from the general fund. Debt service for that new debt ranges from a minimum of $3.4 million in '23 to a maximum of $8.6 million in '27. And that's when the principal starts amortizing on that debt. That's the reason for the big jump up on that piece. Some, just want to note right there that, you know, it is currently on a short-term line of credit, like I mentioned a minute ago. So there are some small risks to interest rates, given that, as you all know, the, the market has been a little active in the last six to nine months. So. So those may have an impact on some of the interest in the, in the near term on that, on that borrowing. And then the next slide, I just wanted to show the, with specific to the general fund, showing the debt service and then showing the different components of our debt service budget. So this shows in blue the existing debt for the county and the roll-off of that debt. In orange, we show the new debt planned in the '23 through '32 CIP. And then it's, actually, yeah, we don't have, I exclude AHEF in this one, so it's just those two pieces. But you see that, you know, with the roll-off, there's a pretty aggressive roll-off on the blue side with existing debt, and then those new commitments that it starts becoming a larger portion of the county's debt service. And then just a, a final kind of wrap-up. Talk about looking ahead, you know, kind of some risks and some other things. So between for the '23 through '32 CIP, you know, we do adhere to the county's policies, including that 10% limit. The debt service increases, they are large, but they are consistent with previous CIPs. And just wanted to note to the board that they may, you know, depending on these increases and the county's tax revenues, they may increase, they may require a near-term tax increase once those, those, those amounts are locked in. Some risks, as I was mentioning, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, you know, kind of post-COVID and where things go on real estate, commercial and residential. But any, you know, deterioration or softness in those markets could have an impact on overall revenues. And debt service to expenditures, if the county's budget gets smaller, the afford, ability to afford more debt also gets smaller proportionally. Another thing is, you know, rising interest rates. As, as I just mentioned, that's, it's a big risk. Right now, we're pretty comfortable. I was just looking before we came up here. Yesterday's rates, you know, 20-year AAA MMD rates are 3.2%. Average is probably more like, for a county bond, probably more like 2.5%, 2.4 when we issue. So we're well within our budgeting estimates, but that's substantially higher than 12 months ago. So we don't know if it'll continue on this path or it'll, you know, go to a slower pace, but that is something we'll have to evaluate in future CIP cycles. And on that note, we do update the CIP biannually. So to the extent that those things do change, we'll be back here 24 months from now, probably earlier, talking about that and those impacts and how, what adjustments we may need to make to either afford the same CIP or, you know, increase or decrease appropriately. So with that, open up to questions.
Thank you very much. Have you hold that thought and invite the representatives of our Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission, Mr. Robertson, Chair Robertson, and Ms. Burgess to please join us. We are, again, receipt of some recommendations from you all, and we look forward to hearing more about them and more about the deliberations of the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission. Fantastic. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Kristol and members of the board. Gillian and I are among the longest-serving members of the FAC. We're happy to be with you. I led a sub-team of the FAC that looked at stormwater funding, and Gillian, a team that looked at transportation funding. So while stormwater is fresh in your minds, I'll deal with that, and then she'll take up transportation. First of all, I suspect it won't surprise you to learn that the single vote that we had was a unanimous vote by the FAC that the board approved the county manager's recommendation for the portion of the SIP dealing with stormwater funding. But beyond that, I'll say that we thought that the, the level of investment was sort of appropriately robust, that the distribution of the funding between capacity development, it gets about 2/3 of the funding, and, and water quality and maintenance seemed appropriate to us. But I think there was also some recognition, or maybe it's better to call it a belief, that the historic levels of funding that we're seeing in this CIP for stormwater may need to be continued in the, in the time past the 10 years of this. And I'll tell you some of the things that influenced our thinking about that. One of the things that I did was go back to the, to the 2014 Stormwater Master Plan and looked at some of the statistics that were cited in the very beginning of that. A third of the stormwater sewer system that had been modeled at that time, the, the county staff determined needed additional capacity to reduce flooding. 9% of the outfalls were in poor condition, and more than five miles of county streams were continuing to experience severe and continuing erosion. So I asked the staff, if we fund what's, what's anticipated in this SIP, where are we going to be at the end of 10 years with those, those numbers? For the, the third of the storm sewer system that would need additional capacity, we do about 34, at the end of the SIP, we would have addressed about 34% of the projects in the five most significant watersheds. Of the, the 9% of outfalls that are in poor condition, that number would drop to about 4%. And with the five miles of county streams that continue to experience severe and continuing erosion, by the end of the SIP, about 2.9 miles of those five miles of streams will have been addressed. I, I don't in any way bring up those numbers to imply any criticism at all, but rather to point out the important progress, but as well, the significant amount of work that will remain to be done when that's over. The other thing that I'll note is I asked the, the staff whether they could take me on a tour of the Cardinal Stormwater Retention Facility that's under construction very near my house. And yes, it was muddy. We had a large storm the night before I did the tour. My, my muddy boots are still sitting on the front porch. And it was a, they were incredibly generous with their time, as they always are. It was a terrific tour. You know, 4 million gallons of storage in that storage capacity in that facility. And when I asked the engineers at the end, well, what kind of a storm will this help us address? They said it will help us address a 10-year storm. And I have to confess, I was a little taken aback by that because I think, you know, the 10-year storm 10 years from now is going to be a two-year storm if we fail to make progress on climate change as current conditions around the world suggest we may well. So it's simply, I, I raise that only to, to talk about the challenges that remain for Greg and his incredibly good staff. We have some, several future considerations that, that I think are worthy of your attention. I, I've talked to this board before about my admiration for the Department of Environmental Services, and I think they deserve that applause nowhere more than they do in what they've achieved with our MS4 permit. The, the, you know, meeting, the fairly significant pollutant loadings to the Chesapeake Bay, perhaps the most important esterine system in the world, are, are absolutely incredible. But what's going to come in the next five-year cycle is significantly more challenging. And if, if you have looked back at that slide 22 that, that they just presented to you that talked about the challenges they face, you see that it's, that, that, that getting there is going to be hard. If anybody can do it, I think they can. But we simply, the FAC simply commends to your attention the fact that that's going to be a real challenge. And so addressing water quality issues and maintenance is going to be incredibly important. Our future consideration number two, several members of our subgroup thought that the county does a really good job of presenting information about stormwater on the county website. But given the level of investment, the level of the challenge and the level of investment that we're making, it, I think it's probably possible to up the game. And, and one of our members suggested, you know, additional maps and charts that, you know, perhaps watershed by watershed, that show where the challenges are, that shows where the existing infrastructure is, that shows where the projects are, and that those could be made available on the website. They could be made available, you know, mailing to people in the same way that the county sends water quality criteria under the Safe Drinking Water Act to every county resident. That, I know that's expensive, but there are just a lot of ways that we can get that information out there. And we thought that was worth bringing to your attention as well. And there was a specific suggestion that the, the, the information that's put out there should include information about how stormwater control has been integrated into county parks in ways that maintain the natural state of the parks for public enjoyment. The third issue deals with the sanitary district tax change to a, a stormwater utility funding system. That's obviously a fundamental change in the way we fund these programs now. One of the most important changes will be the effects that it'll have on nonprofit organizations in the county, including some houses of worship, you know, many of which haven't paid a stormwater district tax now. And the FAC encourages the county to, the county staff and county board to first continue its communication with the nonprofit groups. I'm the FAC's representative on the Stormwater Utility Community Advisory Group, so I know these issues have come up already in those meetings and that we simply need to address them more. We also recommended that the, the board should carefully consider rate design criteria and credit programs that might mitigate some of the impacts on nonprofits. It's important to note what I'm not saying, or what the FAC is not saying. We're not saying that nonprofits ought not to have to pay some sort of, of a fee. Simply that in, especially in the transition, if they're going to pay a fee, there, there might be things you could consider that will, that will deal with the, the challenges that they'll face in doing so. I don't have any other, anything else to say to you unless there are questions that I can answer for you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I might propose, just given the hour that we hear both presentations. But I'm glad that we still have our staff in case there are any further questions elicited from your very thoughtful feedback. So thanks for that work.
I had to say what I just told you because Greg and the staff will rough me up outside if I didn't.
If you didn't give it the chance for questions. That's right. Excellent. So we'll go now to, to Commissioner Burgess for, I believe, a report on the FAC's consideration of the transportation elements of the CIP.
Exactly. Okay, great. So thank you very much and thank you for the time. And the, the FAC and especially the Transportation Subcommittee would like to express their, their gratitude to staff for their generosity of their time, for their expertise, and especially for the CIP. As you notice and as members of the public have seen, this CIP, the presentation of this proposed CIP has really gone a long way into making it more clear where the investments would be, what the impacts are, how these, how these investments connect back to our master, our master planning efforts and all of those things. These are things we've been talking about in FAC for a long time, and it's really great to see, see the fruits of all those efforts. And we recognize that it's a huge effort on the part of staff, and we think that they're doing a great job, and we really very, very much appreciate that. And I've heard that from members of the public, too. On the transportation side, our one vote was also a unanimous vote to, to recommend that the board adopt the manager's proposed CIP for transportation as proposed. Importantly, in the transportation sector, somewhat similarly to the stormwater sector, we, a lot of the discussion in the FAC centered around flexibility. And one of the things we really appreciate in this CIP compared to especially the last 10-year CIP is that there, there's more flexibility built into transportation funding. The CIP traditionally in the transportation world has, has had a lot of project-focused funding. So if you look at the investments, it's very, in past CIPs, you'll just see a lot of money line item out for specific projects and fewer pools of money that are flexible to address issues over time. In this CIP, you see more pools of money. And we think that that's particularly important at this point in time where there's so much change in the transportation sector, both on the use side and on the technology side. You know, we, as you guys all know, with the pandemic, there's an increased move to telework. That changes how people use transportation. There are increasing conversations about using transportation for schools' needs. Again, that can train, that can change how transportation is used, change how transit is used, change how kids get to school really impacts the whole transportation, transportation network. And then finally, as you know, electric vehicles and both for tran, or for transit, for personal use and for micro mobility have really changed and are, and continue to change the transportation landscape. So having this flexibility really allows us to be nimble as all of these things are changing. And we really appreciate the focus on, on Vision Zero because, of course, saving lives is important. And it's, happens to be convenient that the, in the transportation realm, saving lives usually correlates very closely with sustainability. So as we do things, the, the safest forms of transportation are transit, walking, biking. Those also are the most sustainable means of transportation. So we have these investments. We have a number of pools of money that are focused specifically at Vision Zero. But we think that those will also serve other county goals at the same time. So with that, moving very quickly to our future considerations, I'll touch on these themes. The first is just to keep in, in mind that we expect that, that future transport patterns remain uncertain as we come out of the pandemic. And we should continue to consider how to encourage ships around Arlington to be made by transit and other sustainable modes of transportation, taking into account that part-time teleworkers in Arlington are more likely to spend more time in Arlington in the work week, and they're more likely to obtain services like recurring medical care, self-care appointments, childcare in the county. Our second future consideration is about housing. As we talk about, about missing middle and as we talk about changing how housing may be, may be laid out, transfers, currently, 58% of Arlington's housing units are along the county's three planning corridors. And missing middle has the potential to change some of that density. The FAC wanted to make sure to point out that we should keep that in mind, that we should consider the potential increase in housing units outside of the three corridors as we evaluate future transportation investments in planned transit services. Again, along the, the theme of being nimble and being flexible. And then finally, we wanted to highlight the coordination with APS. All vehicle transportation to APS schools impacts the county budget. School bus, bus service is, of course, funded directly from county tax dollars. The space and services needed to enable families to drive personal vehicles to schools is also paid for out of either the APS budget or the county budget. And so we, the FAC wanted to, to point out as a future consideration that, that APS in Arlington County should continue the coordination on transportation, including adjusting art and other public transportation routes and schedules to allow more students to rely on public transportation to get to schools, and by improving infrastructure so that more students can walk and bike to school safely and when appropriate, independently.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And hopefully, we also have DES here, too, because we wanted to follow up on that, although I know where we are without our transportation leads. Let me open the floor for questions, both about debt service, other questions for our FAC about these really thoughtful recommendations. Really, on behalf of all of us, thank you again for that work and that analysis. I think you've surfaced not only some actionable recommendations for us, but some, some important, big ideas that are important for us to carry forward in consideration of this in future year CIPs. Mr. Doris, do you want to start us off with questions or feedback?
Thank you. It's just really going to be some feedback and, and some commentary, given the hour. First, as it relates to the presentation from the FAC, I'll, I'll just say it's, it's, we're uniquely, it's uniquely beneficial for us to have people who are advising us on the fiscal impacts of our, our staff plans and policies. We're also subject matter experts impacts of our staff plans and policies, who are also subject matter experts in the areas that are of immense priority to review this year. So I just don't take it for granted that in a year where we're making these historic investments in stormwater and where, as always, transportation is a big piece of the puzzle, we have people who bring the expertise that you bring to this work. So thank you. And I'd just like to say that, one, the, you know, Peter, how to figure out how this is sustained as part of, what you were essentially saying, or at least what I heard you say is, this is our new normal moving forward. Matt, you spoke to this a little bit before. And I'm not sure that our, our sort of, you know, capital planning and fiscal house has been built with this level of investment as the long-term normal and how that, you know, meets with, with other emerging needs. So that's just a really important takeaway, kind of sobering, but I certainly think it's well worth our consideration as we, we consider adopting this year's CIP. And Gillian, if I could just say, I, I'm going to take what, what you all have recommended in terms of how to think about transit and make sure it's imprinted in every regional body that I'm a part of, where everyone is just looking at telework as this existential threat and they're failing to see the opportunity to shift people to transit as they have more time and opportunity to travel, even if it's not to and from work, might change the way we deliver certain transit modes. But what a tremendous opportunity to shift people as they do the other trips in their life that they will still have to do and may likely have more time to do and can devote that opportunity to transit, even if it doesn't provide the time premium that driving does. If it's a sustainable option, that they have the luxury to pursue now, what a tremendous opportunity. But they're not going to do it if we don't have the utility of transit to meet those needs. So thank you very much for that. And Jason, I'm sorry to be speed talking. While, I just love how conservative we are here with, with our fiscal planning as we move forward. It ensures, at least for me, that we are not going to be in the business of.
Abrupt adjustments.
What's that?
Abrupt adjustments.
Well, abrupt adjustments for sure, and just really being able to deliver the CIP that we deliver. I mean, you've outlined the headwinds and the risks, but given the conservative assumptions on revenue growth, I have pretty, pretty strong confidence that we will remain within our debt, our debt limit caps in all various capacities. And it essentially means to our public that we just have a greater likelihood of being able to deliver the CIP that we advertise, which I, I just don't want to take for granted as being extremely important. Thank you.
Well put. Mr. Karantopoulos.
Yeah. Oh, I just, yeah. So thank you so much. One remark on what you said about where is not going to crest or not going to plateau. One of the lessons that we will have in front of us is to understand how these investments actually will help us to manage the next stage. This is, this we don't know yet. We have been always reactive to that. We have tried to, you know, just drain the watersheds and now we are in the business of having to approach that with a more complicated engineering, with more stakeholders as well. Ms. Kristol very correctly asked what can individuals do, for example, and it's not only, you know, behavior change, it's also design change. It makes a difference. So, you know, a grandparental generation in Arlington used to build houses over a mott of, you know, five or six feet. There was a reason for that. We didn't, we didn't monitor that very well and we allowed over time, you know, to undo this. So we will, we'll probably look at these kind of built resilience, designed resilience, and this has to then to, you know, to multiply the beneficial effects of this investment. This investment, the huge investment that we're making here would be really in very, would be really in a, in a weak space if we cannot advance the ability to respond to the next level. So I actually am very keen and I pay a lot of attention to see when we are beginning to see the fruits of that. This is really important. So I'm not going to concede to that, you know, the new normal is a continuous climb to Mount Everest. It has to, it has to bend at some point. If it doesn't, then there's something that we're missing. So, and transportation is the same thing, actually. We have to move the model split. We have an amazing opportunity. It's not only telework that gives us the amazing opportunity. Actually, the density of activity is increasing. People can do more with their time. Students will have more options to move around. So we have to rationalize these options to make, to make the most efficient models more available to them. So that's my two cents to that. To the, to the projections here, I agree with Mr. Dorsey. This is a very conservative approach. However, the, the interest rate risk is there. And I, I understand that, of course, we will have the opportunity to correct way before we see, you know, an approach to the 10% limit. So that gives me a lot of comfort. But I, I see it already in your presentation that you already make a mention of what the possible adjustments could be. So that, that needs to be observed.
Thanks very much. Okay, Mr. DiFranti and Ms. Garvey.
I will be brief. Thank you, Mr. Robertson, for reminding us 34% is less great than I, less of a percentage than I might wish. What you didn't say about our places of worship is much, much, much appreciated because I really hope that they will pull pitch in, too. So those are two thank yous and appreciate your work. Ms. Burgess, I had not recently remembered the 58% that you identified. Appreciate also your points on flexibility with respect to transportation types. And Mr. Freese, thank you for the, adding the other metrics. Some of the other, 10% is burned in my mind. The other metrics seem, it's helpful to have them reminded to me. So I'm glad and confident that we will be able to fund it. That is all I had. Thanks to each of you.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you to our FAC folks. This is great. Also, JFAC sent us some, you know, they had sent us some concerns about, I think, APS, their future estimates not, and their CIP not according with ours. And I think that all got straightened out, so that they adopted APS CIP and ours now agree as to future amounts.
Correct. Correct. And the numbers I showed you today incorporate their adopted CIP.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you. And I really do, everything that Mr. Dorsey said about, you know, the great advice we get and the great help, thank you. And that, really appreciate that. One last thing on the, the whole discussion about what can individuals do and what do people do? Just, I was going to say, you know, I had a trip to look at what they're doing in Germany and they're having similar problems and everything, and they put together a pamphlet, I think it's titled, "What Does Climate Change Mean to Me?" And that might be good, because you were asking, Peter, about how can we catch people's eyes and make them think about it? And maybe that's something that we could, I kind of like that sort of, what does it mean to me?
Oh, yeah, what does it? So we've got some answers for them. It means a lot. So thank you, which I think they know, but it might be helpful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I have just one question for you, Mr. Freese, before we go. The really helpful, the relationship of, the slide that showed the relationship of debt service to the 10% cap as a percent of general fund expenditures. The category, and these slides aren't numbered, unfortunately, but it's the one entitled "Hearing to Debt Policy" with the black box and the bars. The total existing debt service is the combined debt service of county and schools. Is that right?
Including AHEF as well.
Including AHEF as well. Is it possible to get us a version that breaks that out even further and shows the blue bar, county side and school side?
Yeah, I have that, too.
Okay, that would be fabulous. It's, you know, it's interesting to me, schools obviously has been on an incredible building program, right? And it's been really exciting to see that we have finally caught up to our predicted student growth. So it helped me to know kind of how we're, how we're metabolizing the debt of that over time and the relationship of those things. I think it's also helpful for us to know, you know, when, when maybe the projects we've talked about here are growing, right, with the share is. So thank you.
Yeah, I could just tell you, you know, in terms of not the by year, but just in total, we have about 680 million on the general fund side of outstanding debt, and then schools has about 480 million.
Really helpful. Okay. Really helpful. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. And I'll just, I just want to emphasize something that you said, because we did hear this from the JFAC and I appreciate the opportunity to sort of clarify. Not only have we been able to, you and your colleagues in DMF, been able to adopt and incorporate the schools' CIP now that the school board has voted on it, but exactly as you said, right, that we understood there'd be a little bit of give and take. Generally speaking, our side or our team is projecting out about two years, right, of sort of based on previous practice. In this case, we were doing four because of the previous two-year CIPs. I know that the incongruousness between the two recommended estimates from the manager and superintendent was perceived by some in the community as catastrophic impact that the left hand didn't know what the right was doing. This is, to some extent, how the process should work, right? There is a give and take. We've been obviously in close coordination with schools as the board approached the adoption of the CIP. And I think reflects that, again, you know, there were not, credit to our staff, a lot of hangovers from the fact that we did one-year CIPs for the past few years. That may have been one of the impacts and I'm really glad that the teams were able to work so collaboratively to resolve it. I'll conclude by echoing my thanks to the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee, the commission. There's little I can say that my colleagues haven't said well, but your points have been excellent ones. We have just one other order of business totally unrelated to our CIP, which is that we have a few appointments, reappointments to advisory groups that did not make their way onto our June board agenda, no worries at all. But we want to make sure that our residents can keep serving us in these important capacities. So I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint to the community, the Community Development Citizens Advisory Committee, Thomas Denning for a term ending May 31st of 2025. To the Disability Advisory Commission, we reappoint Elizabeth Priel for a term ending May 31st of 2024. And to the Tenant-Landlord Commission, reappoint David Tim for a term ending May 31st of 2025. A second is not required, but I will call for a vote. All those in favor of those appointments, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. We thank those three very much for their service and in some cases, leadership of their respective commissions. We will be back in this room in 43 minutes for our CIP public hearing. We look forward to hearing from some of our residents as well. Thank you so much, all who've joined us for this afternoon. We're recessed.